Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. It is 11:00 a.m. We are in city chambers, and I call the City Commission Regular Meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Stokes, myself, Mayor Langdon, Vice Mayor White, and Commissioner Emrich. There is a quorum for this meeting. Also present are City Manager Fletcher, Deputy City Attorney Golan, City Clerk Faust, Recording Secretary Powell. We have Police Chief Garrison in the back, and Acting Fire Chief Hurley, also in the back. I would like to ask Mr. Golan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have almost a full house today, and I know that most of the folks in the audience are here for a couple of agenda topics. So I am looking for a motion to approve today's agenda with items number four and five moved up front to follow this motion.
Mayor, can we redo that? Because my agenda is showing 5A and 6A, not 4 and 5 like you stated.
Thank you. So moving 5A and 6A to the front of the agenda.
So moved?
All right.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda, moving items 5A and 6A to the front of the line made by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner Emrich. And that motion passes 5 to 0. So let's move on to item 5A. I invite my fellow.
Public comment for 5A?
We're going to have it follow our presentations. Thank you, Commissioner. So I invite my fellow commissioners down on the floor so that we can properly recognize Thank you, everybody. The sun? Hello? Maybe I will use my outdoor voice. Yeah, I don't want to be yelling if I'm... Can you hear me? Okay. This is a very special day for the city of Northport. We are here to recognize a most esteemed leader. We have several awards and recognitions prepared for you today, and we will start with the Key to the City. And I would like everyone in the room to know that the Key to the City is very selectively bestowed on esteemed residents, visitors, and folks who contribute to our city. Think about that word, esteemed. We don't use it very often, and it symbolizes and recognizes individuals who have made major, significant, and long-lasting contributions to the city. So I would like to invite up Mr. Franzen to present the key. He is the person who submitted the application. And Jean, do you want to come up, or do you want us to come to you? You're right. We can talk.
Want to introduce you?
No, just you say where you are.
Okay.
Want to say your address, Mr. Franzen?
I just have to say it's really, truly an honor. I've known Jean since I've moved to Northport five years ago, and anytime you have a city named after you, Mr. Northport, it is an honor to give you the key so you can finally get in the town.
This has no money attached to it.
I was hoping you were going to give me the combo to say. An interesting thing about Jean, he is really the reason the city of Northport has the voice that he has in Sarasota County today. He's the only man in our city who's ever been a county commissioner, a school board member of the county of Sarasota, and he really paved the way to our public. Thank you. I just want to say thank you, the privilege to receive this year and have all you folks come to see me, receive this year. Just thank you very much. And you guys, too.
And yet, there's more. Mr. Cutzinger, Chair Cutzinger wanted to be here. I don't see him in the audience, so I suspect something came up to conflict. But he wanted Sarasota County to also bestow on you a certificate of recognition, and let me just read it, presented to Jean Matthews in recognition of his 50 years of service in Sarasota County. Since 1972, Jean Matthews has actively advocated for Sarasota County, the city of Northport, the business community, and the community at large. In addition to serving as a Sarasota County Commissioner from 1993 to 1996, and I believe the only Northport resident to have that distinction, he held, also held, position on Sarasota County School Board. He also served on the Northport Chamber of Commerce, Business and Economic Development, and Government Relations Committees. As evidence of his commitment to our community, the Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club in Northport was named in his honor. He was awarded the Northport Businessman of the Year in 1992 and was inducted into the first Business Advocate Hall of Fame by the Northport Chamber in 2015. This certificate is awarded in recognition of the honor and esteem awarded to Jean Matthews and appreciation of its 50 years of dedication and service to this city and to the county. It is presented as a remembrance by the Sarasota County Commission this third day of April 2023. City Commissioner McDowell also submitted an application for a proclamation to be made in Mr. Matthews' honor, and so I invite her up to deliver that.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Now you know how I feel. I'll have some direction.
I would not be in the correct position to be able to read this proclamation alone. I would like to ask my fellow commissioners to please read each Whereas Clause taking turns, because this truly is a representation of the commission's desire to proclaim today your day. So I will start and then just have somebody come up and carry on where I left off. Whereas Jean, Eugene Jean Matthews, was born March 16th, 19... Not going to finish this. And was raised in Brooklyn, New York. Jean and Lorraine were married in 1960. They have three children, Debbie, Diane, and Steve. The Matthews family moved to Northport in 1972. After high school, Jean joined the Army, and during the Korean War, he was stationed in Japan.
Let's see, without my glasses, yes. We weren't forewarned of this. Whereas Jean opened an independent all-state insurance agency in 1982, which became a second-generation Northport business in 1999. He helped start the city's first newspaper, The Northport News, and hosted a TV program devoted to Northport, A View From Here. I remember that.
And whereas Jean has served on many Northport and Sarasota County boards and committees, including the Northport Volunteer Fire Department, Little League, Kiwanis, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Gulf Coast Community Foundation, and the West Villages Improvement District, and... Somewhere around there, yeah.
Whereas Jean served on the Sarasota County School Board, where he was instrumental in purchasing property, which is now the location of the Northport High School. Jean also served as Sarasota County Commissioner, from where he worked tirelessly for Northport.
Whereas Jean strongly felt the need for Northport children to have a safe place to go after school and during the summer. The Boys and Girls Club honored Jean's commitment and dedication by naming the Northport Club the Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club. Today, his devotion to this cause continues as an advisory member. And?
Whereas he has been recognized as a Northport Citizen of the Year, the Northport Businessman of the Year, the first Northport Chamber of Commerce Business Advocate of the Year, and in 2008, the Northport City Commission proclaimed Eugene Jean Matthews to be officially known as Mr. Northport. Whereas service to community is one of Jean's passions, he could not have accomplished all of this without the love, support, encouragement, and strength of his loving wife, Lorraine. Whereas Jean has a life quote, "Do what's right and fair," and has proven he lives this motto every single day. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of Northport, do hereby proclaim today, April 11th, 2023, as Jean Matthews Day.
There we go.
Come on, come on.
The family's around.
Anyone, everyone.
Everybody squeeze together like they're in love with each other.
Okay.
All right. You don't have much room to work with back here. You gotta... All right. I think we're good. Okay, everyone? Wait. Okay, two. Three. You can see Jill running around. She didn't have time. Oh, okay.
Maybe we love you guys.
Thank you. I understand, City Clerk, that we have public comment on this particular item?
Yes. We have Jill Luke and then Joan Morgan.
I can't do it without crying. First of all, happy birthday, Pete. It's good you're celebrating on a good day here. When I came into this city in 2009, Jean was one of the first men, persons that I even met. He took me under his wing, tried to push me into anything and everything he could, but especially the Boys and Girls Club. I think a year or so later, he started telling me, Jill, I need to get out of it. I need to bring other people in, but the man is still going strong for the kids of this community. He's formed a legacy that has established this city, and if we could all be and live a lifestyle that Jean Matthews does, the city would be far better than any other city in the nation. I got close to the family when I met Debbie. She's a sister I've never had. And I met Steve then. Debbie was off, or the other was off... I'm forgetting your name. I'm so sorry. Diane was off, so I would only see her on special occasions. But the family became kind of a surrogate family for me within the city. I love every one of you in the family. Jean, you will always have a special part in my heart, and I call you Dad. I call Debbie's sister all the time because you mean that much to me. Family is everything, and you're everything to me. Love you.
It just happened last year, didn't it? Boy, we're getting old. Most of you were born, half of you. But 1972, we met. I don't even know where we met. I don't... I don't remember. I mean, I don't know when and I met you guys. I know where we met, Lorraine. I think that over at St. Paul's Presbyterian Church, the young women's group, which was anyone from a newborn to 95, okay? Remember, there was only 1,200 of us, so believe me, anyone from newborn to 95. What weren't you on, Jean? I mean, it was just always, you had to do it, and we could do it without getting police involved, without getting permits, without getting insurance. We frankly did anything we could do without Marge watching. We had to work around the fact that kids would be allowed in this town because at that point in time, oh my gosh, they weren't supposed to be here. Oh my gosh, care about it. Okay? You were a young family, three young kids. I remember them when they were little, okay? And what a family. I mean, I want to celebrate the Matthews family, all of them, because he was a dad and this was a family, and they stuck together through all the craziness, through all the ridiculous stuff, through all the whatever unbelievable stuff, okay? We couldn't pull it off today, okay? Probably some of it was illegal. You know? It wasn't immoral, but it wasn't legal. I can remember we could meet at Trinity and Knights Methodist Church, almost on the, you know, up on the sanctuary for, to talk about schools because you couldn't come to City Hall. Oh, no, 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 no. Schools were not things we were supposed to talk about because little kids went there, okay? But Jean, I mean, what haven't you done, you know? I mean, it's been a long, long road. You did it all. Lorraine, oh my gosh, what a woman, right? What hasn't Lorraine done? And silently, she should have been saying some nice, where's my husband? Where's my husband? You know? But he did it all. We have never been able to get anyone else on the school board or county commission, and that is insane. We need to. Absolutely, we need to, because we are the largest city now, and we still are not represented. But thank you, Jean, for all you did. Can't thank you enough. You know, you've always been in, ed in my life and in our kids' lives, and you've done so much, and your family's done so much, and the tradition goes on. Thank you. I'm so sorry, ma'am. Your time is up. Thank you. City Clerk, do we have any more public comment on this item?
Yes.
Okay. I do see Commissioner McDowell. Your light is on. Is that for this item?
It is.
Go ahead, please.
Jean Matthews family, Lorraine, thank you very much for everything you have done for our city, for our community, for our county. When we moved here, the first name I remember hearing was Jean Matthews, Lorraine Matthews. And I'm like, who are these people? And it didn't take me very long to figure out who you were, and I am very grateful for your dedication to the Boys and Girls Club. I'm very grateful for you being instrumental in getting that club here in our city. It's, it has a profound effect on me and my family, and getting to know each of you throughout the years that I've lived here, my family has lived here, my kids have raised up through the Boys and Girls Club. I just, I don't think I have the right words to express my gratitude, except to say thank you. Thank you very much for everything you have done for this city.
So I think it's very fitting that the next item on the agenda is a presentation on the Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And on behalf of myself and the city staff, we also want to recognize Mr. Matthews. Thank you for all your support, since I've been here and for all the support you gave before I even got here. It is appreciated. And we will turn it over to Mr. Bill Statlow for the presentation of the new Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club.
Good morning, everyone. It's my absolute pleasure to be here, and our absolute pleasure to be here with a lot of our team members from the Boys and Girls Club, and to be part of the celebration we just saw for Mr. Matthews, someone that means so much to this community, and someone that means so much to the children of this community through the Boys and Girls Club. So really great for us to be here. Jean, the kids made some cards for you. Travis, our club director, has them. They're going to deliver them over to you right now while we do this. But congratulations and thank you for all you do on behalf of the children. So, quick story about Jean. Jean loves the kids. He loves coming to the Boys and Girls Club. He comes often. And one day, he came to the club, and I was there with him, and this little boy walked up to him and said, who are you? And he said, I'm Jean Matthews. And this little boy went, his eyes got big, he was so excited, and he goes, that is so cool. You're named after our Boys and Girls Club. May not be entirely true, but sorry for the record. All kidding aside, make no mistake about it, there wouldn't be a Boys and Girls Club. We wouldn't be here today with all of you if it wasn't for Jean Matthews. And it's been a 28-year journey here in this community. We started with a partnership with the city at Dallas White Park in the Scout House. That was 28 years ago. And we were doing that just to serve children while the sale, our purchase of South Biscayne Baptist Church and the remodeling of South Biscayne Baptist Church was happening. And then in 1997, the Jean Matthews Club opened its doors at that site on Biscayne Drive. We've been proud to serve the children of Northport for the last 28 years, and today we're here to talk to you about the next 28 years. We've been talking for a number of years about how to grow with the city. How do we serve more children? How do we properly serve this community in youth development? And we actually started a task force some years back. We had some city leaders, business leaders, influential people, donors in the community, and some city officials sat on it. And then COVID happened, and this task force came to a screeching halt. And as we were getting ready to ramp it back up and start this conversation up again of how to grow with Northport, September 28th happened to this community. I don't need to tell you all the effects of hurricane on your community, but it greatly affected our Boys and Girls Club. It affected our staff, it affected our children and families, and it had a devastating effect on our buildings at South Biscayne, the original church buildings that were in the church. So we, right when the hurricane happened, we were waiting for the schools to open. We started serving immediate needs of the community. We did food distributions. We served essential items out of the parking lot at the Jean Matthews Club. And then when the site was safe, we started serving children in the schools, then we brought all the children back to the club. Now, all the children are being served at the club and the gymnasium. It's not ideal. We lost those other two buildings. They're just beyond repair. They're not safe. So we have classroom set up in the gymnasium, and we do have two portables on order, and they are a temporary solution. They are temporary classrooms, these two portables, because what I'm here to announce to you today is that we'll be building a brand-new Jean Matthews Club on our site in Biscayne Drive. And that club will be built right where it belongs, on Biscayne Drive. It's going to be a gorgeous 14,000-square-foot facility. I believe we have some renderings for you here. Do you get them?
Wow.
Yeah, so the gymnasium that is there currently will stay. This will be built right off the gymnasium. It's an extra 14,000 square feet, as I mentioned, and I do want to talk about, it was designed and will be built by Halfacre Construction. Jack Cox is the owner of Halfacre. He came to our board and said, I will design and build it, and there is no profit or markup on our end. I'm doing it at my cost. So their Halfacre Construction, they're at cost. $4.5 million. And when we kick that off, then you go, wow, how are we going to do this? We have to do it. It's the right thing to do. We're going to do it. And we talked about it internally with our board. And the first thing that happened was a board member stepped up and said, I'm going to kick things off with a $1 million gift. I wanted to recognize that board member because he's here with us today, is Mr. Steve Townsend right here in the... Is that right? As you know, as things change and new things happen, sometimes there are changes. And I said to Steve, a million-dollar gift, you know, that's a naming opportunity gift. He said, oh, no, that will always be the Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club. So the campus will be named after the Townsends, he and his lovely white Marge, and it will continue to be the Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club at a brand-new facility. He came to our board and said, I will design and build it, and there is no profit or markup on our end. I'm doing it at my cost. So their Half Acre Construction, they were cost. $4.5 million. And when we kick that off, then you go, wow. How are we gonna do this? We have to do it. It's the right thing to do. We're going to do it. And we talked about it internally with our board. And the first thing that happened was a board member stepped up and said, I'm gonna kick things off with a $1 million gift. I wanted to recognize that board member because he's here with us today. It's Mr. Steve Townsend, right here in the drawing room. As you know, as things change and new things happen, sometimes there are changes. And I said to Steve, a million-dollar gift, you know, that's a naming opportunity gift. He said, oh, no, that will always be the Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club. So the campus will be named after the Townsend's, he and his lovely wife, Marge, and it will continue to be the Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club at a brand-new facility. Shortly after that, and I mean shortly after that, days after that, another board member who's here with us this morning, who you all know well in this community, Jamie D. Domenico of Cool Today. He and his wife Julie stepped up with a $500,000 gift. And we were off and running. And I wanted to show you, here's some renderings of the club. That's what it'll look like from the front. What also happened is when the old church buildings come down and this is built, it's gonna be a much more user-friendly site. It'll be safer for the children and families as they pull up. And right, one of the exciting things about this is right there to the left of the front doors, you'll see where it says Boys and Girls Club. You may not be able to see that, but under the sign, it says Food Bank. We're gonna have a food bank right there so our families can get groceries, get fresh food. And that's a partnership with All Face Food Bank that we're doing at many of our clubs. And that will continue here. When I say state-of-the-art, I mean it. It's going to have a 2,500-square-foot teen center. They're gonna have the teens, they're gonna have their own learning lab built into the club, their own classrooms. It'll have technology labs, all the classrooms and game rooms you would expect from a Boys and Girls Club, but also a first-class commercial kitchen that will be there for, teach our children, teach our children about the culinary arts, but also so the community can use it as an asset to the community. Because as I mentioned, 28 years we've been part of this community. We want to be able to continue to do that. So, one other thing I wanted to mention is, this is all being headed up by a gentleman who was supposed to be here this morning. He couldn't make it. He got caught in a plane last night. His name is Tom Shapiro. He's also another major donor. He's, I don't think when he sold his business a few years back, that he thought he'd be working for free at the Boys and Girls Club full-time. I told him on double his pay. But he, he's a tireless champion for youth, and he's gonna head up this project and make sure that this community gets a first-class Boys and Girls Club. So I wanted to recognize Tom, too. Do you have any? Did you show the floor plan? Sorry, I didn't know if I, I mentioned the floor plan. There it is. And you can, it's hard to see, but starting from the left, the front door, the corridor is right there at the middle. That food bank is to the top. The teen center is right there when you walk in, down at the bottom, right there. And the commercial kitchen's in the back. And then the rest of the items are just amazing for a Boys and Girls Club. It's really a wonderful design, a safe design, and a very functional design for the children of Northport. One thing that Steve and Jamie did right after they made their gifts, they volunteered to go see one of our partners, Gulf Coast Community Foundation, and talk to them and ask them if they were interested in this project. Well, were they interested? Steve and Jamie made the ask. They did $1 million also towards this project. So we're standing here today with $2.8 million raised on a $4.5 million project. We have some more work to do, but that's why we wanted to talk to the public today about it. We're very excited about this project. It's gonna be a tremendous asset for the city of Northport and the children of Northport. I wanted to close by thanking all the commissioners and Manager Fletcher for coming out individually to come see the site, to come see the damage. But it was far more than seeing the damage. They came to see the vision for the future, the children of Northport. So it is our honor to be part of this community, and we're very excited about this. And thank you all very much. Any questions, I'm happy to answer, and Steve and Jamie would be happy to. Mr. Matthews?
We'll let him go first.
I wanna put an ending to that story about the little boy. It's true, I was walking down the hall, and this little boy was coming up. He was seven, eight years old, Boston child, was in the club. And he's carrying two little Bostonwood airplanes. And he said, he says, wait, Mr. Matthews, wait, 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 wait. And he said, I wanna give you this. And he gave me one of the planes. And then he looks at it, and he looks at it. No, give me that back. This one's better. I asked him, I said, you know, why are you doing this? Well, you built this for me.
That's the real story. That's the real story. And Jean's picture is in the club, and the kids do see it, and they do get excited when he comes into the club. And I kinda embellished a little bit there on the other part. Not sure I'm supposed to do it on the record at a city council.
I'm not sure if I can follow that without getting, I'm a little choked up. I'm kind of, I'm Jill Luke's spirit animal, I think, up here. Anyway, before I open it up to Commissioner questions, Mr. Sadlow, I just wanna thank you for your presentation. And if anyone here in the room today would like to make a donation to the Jean Matthews Boys and Girls Club, how would they do that?
They would just reach out to any one of our team members. They can do it through our website. So we have numerous ways. But we'd love to meet them and show them the site and show them the vision.
That's great. And what's your website? And we can try to...
BGCSDC.org.
Okay. Very, very good. Thank you.
It's the initials, Boys and Girls Club, Sarasota County, dot org.
Thank you for that. I'm opening up the Florida Commissioner questions. Commissioner McDowell.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm glad that the public is finally gonna get to see what I have seen about a month ago. I'm excited about what's gonna be happening. I'm excited about seeing the future. And I'm excited about seeing even more children being able to be served at the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you for all of your efforts. Thank you for your financial contributions and all of the tireless efforts. Everybody is playing in getting this to happen. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes, I'm really excited. I remember when that was a church and this was coming, and that we needed that so badly in the city. And through my work with People for Trees, I've done environmental clubs after school and worked with the staff there through the year. So I'm excited to see this and what could happen in the future to bring some more of those little clubs after school out there. And you know I will. And I know some of the trees that we planted there probably won't make it through construction, but we're gonna be planting new ones.
It's gonna be good for trees. It's gonna go right where the old buildings were. There's nothing gonna be, that's good.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm seeing people pushing buttons, but you're not showing up.
I'm showing on mine.
Okay, not on mine. So go ahead.
But yours is broke, not mine.
Mine's broken. Up in the back, IT magic here. Okay, okay. So let's just, go ahead, Commissioner Emmerich.
Me?
You?
Yeah. We just recently met the Matthews, my wife and I. We really had a... And we've heard about all this great stuff that he's done for the city. But in that tour, not only did I wanna go and see the vision that y'all had because the Boys and Girls Club has been a staple in this community for years and years. My kids went there. But most of all, my grandkids go there now, and I had to make sure they weren't acting up like my kids used to. So it's a phenomenal place, and it is very much needed. And Jean, we love you. Thank you so very much.
You have a couple more. Commissioner Stokes.
Well, Jean, and for all you folks, the Boys and Girls Club, I have to say, being fairly new to Northport, going on seven years, my thanks. And I believe that you all have set such a wonderful example for this city. And hopefully, people will take note, and more people will step up because that's really what makes Northport such a special place. It's people. And so I'll echo what everyone else has said. Thank you so much for all you've done. You set an example for me. I hope I can walk on the footsteps over the next few years and make as much of a contribution as I can. So thanks again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I don't know what I can say that hasn't already been said, except to just say again, thank you. And to thank all of the donors and the volunteers and the incredible community support that the club has enjoyed over the years. And I sincerely hope as our city grows that we continue to develop more Jean Matthews because that's really the spirit of this city. So thank you so, so much. With that, I will turn it over to City Clerk. Do we have public comment on this item?
We do. We have Jill Luke, followed by Dawn Francine and Justin Willis.
Bill, thank you. Thank you to everybody who's been working with the Boys and Girls Club. Jean roped me into being a board member at the Jean Matthews Club in 2009. I served on that board until it dissolved for 11 years. It is a phenomenal facility. The people behind the facility are phenomenal. Travis, I believe you went there as a child, didn't you? And now you're the director. Congratulations, well deserved. This is overwhelming to see what I saw upon that screen. I was part of the task force a couple years ago before COVID came in. And I don't know if I really had enough faith that I was gonna see what I'm seeing today. You gentlemen mean so much to the heartbeat of this city because you're providing for the children. They are the heartbeat. They will be the future of this city. And you guys have paved the way for that to happen. Heartfelt gratitude. Thank you.
I am just really overwhelmed, like so many people. Children are my heart. My husband and I have raised 10 children. We have 11 grandchildren. And I was a special needs advocate when we were young with our children in the school systems in Illinois. Just looking at this rendition that you had up and thinking about what we've all gone through at different levels with the hurricane. And I'm sorry. I'm reminded that in life, so many times when we think we see the end, it is only the beginning of something greater. And I want to thank you for being the beginning and the hard work. The only reason we moved to this city is one of our sons moved here because of the demographics of being a younger city for this area. If it hadn't been for you, that might not have been true. So thank you all for all your hard work and your vision for the future here. Thank you.
Justin Willis. Mr. Northport, I don't even know where to begin. Being one of the kids that went from the kids program at South Biscayne Church to being one of the kids that got to go to the Boys and Girls Club back when it was $5 for the whole year. We had to raise it ourselves because our parents weren't gonna pay it. It's amazing to see where we are. Mr. Townsend, I see you sitting over there. My daughter is a Townsend scholar. And the Boys and Girls Club has played such a big part in our life. And now to be a part of my kids' life, it's amazing. Thank you for being an amazing mentor, and thank you for everything you've done for the city. The Boys and Girls Club, let's get it built. I can't wait to see the new building. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. My last, before I can sit down, can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
We did hear a lot about the people, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our staff. They're the ones that make this happen. They're amazing. They truly love and care about these children. And back to that day, we were doing the distribution. I drove down from Sarasota, and we were out doing the distribution there at the Jean Matthews Site. We had staff members handing out food and essential items to people in the community. They didn't have running water. They didn't have power. But they didn't think about themselves. They were thinking about our children and families, and I commend our staff. So thank you all.
Truly the spirit of Northport. And if I can hold it together, we'll resume the agenda. For those who are following on, it's item number two for general public comment. City Clerk, do we have any online general public comment?
We do not.
Do we have any in house?
Yes. Jeffrey Scott, followed by Frank Lammend and Don Richland.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'd like to talk about our charter officers. Taxpaying residents of Northport pay a significant price on the Northport City Commission appointed...
Excuse me, sir. Can you hold his clock, please, Commissioner?
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I see a lot of people are needing to leave to go on with their day. Mr. Scott, can we, can we wait until they exit?
We just paused for a couple minutes because we wanted to hear you.
And then we'll start your clock over.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, everybody. Sorry for that interruption, Mayor and Mr. Scott. God bless you guys.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Scott.
So sorry to interrupt you. We'll start your clock all over. Thank you again, Mayor and Mr. Scott.
Staff, if we could see when everyone has exited, if we could close those doors. I suspect there'll continue to be conversation in the foyer. Thank you for that. Go ahead, Mr. Scott.
So I'm gonna talk about the charter officers in our city charter. Taxpaying residents of Northport pay a significant price and the Northport City Commission-appointed charter officers willingly abuse their power. Positions of authority do not allow you, as city officials, to follow your own version of the city's charter. Simply put, your charter responsibilities and civic duties don't come with the authority to ignore a nation's constitution or its Bill of Rights, or, for that matter, the Northport City Charter. They come with the responsibility to follow and protect them. It's passed due that the taxpaying residents of the city rid their local government of those officials who allow their political activism or personal greed to undermine the public trust. Perhaps our electeds and their charter officers feel that they are justified in either withholding facts and misleading the public whenever they feel the urge. Pattern of half-truths or downright lies does not serve anybody's purpose moving forward, or does it? Under City Manager Fletcher, the only position that is negotiable is we the peoples'. And with that situation, a certain amount of overreach has taken place throughout city government since his appointment. What's going on here? As a Northport city government, lost track of the bright line that should separate politics from their professional responsibility. Does the city of Northport understand the difference between political activism and their public service to the residents of Northport? Does a double standard for local government accountability right here in Northport simply mean no accountability at all? I certainly hope that is not the current situation, especially during these turbulent times that seem to never end and always continue to multiply right here in the city of Northport. And finally, if the current city administration continues to undermine our city's residents, please reference yesterday's workshop, City Manager Agenda under General Business. That will in itself be a miracle moving forward. Thank you.
Where do I start? Okay. I'm Don Richardson. I live in the Jockey Club. And right now, there's a little bit of issue with the dog park. Seems a long time ago that the dog park, the city wanted to build it. And the Jockey Club turned it down. And so they went ahead and built it anyway. Kind of like the canary, where's the 600-pound canary sleep? Anywhere he wants to, you know, we'll do that, I think. But anyway, they built it. And so now they wanted to expand it. And when they wanted to expand it and come to us, then that's when we found out that that we turned it down before, we checked their records. So, anyway, what we're asking for is to up some little bit of rental money and to cover the insurance. Some of those dogs, you know, they might have some pit bulls in there, you know. And if they have a pit bull in there, it can be a little bit dangerous. And we could get hit with the liability. And we don't have, we're a small homeowners association, so we don't really, I don't think we can cover that. So, just that thing, and I'm personally, I'm for the dog park. It's a no-brainer. It enhances the property values. There's a lot of people just love their dogs. And, but, yeah, I'm for the expansion, but not too many people there are. But, you know, I'm always amazed how a little bit of money is a motivator. And if you paid some rental money, it might encourage more people to be, look on it favorably, the expansion. And so, just those things we're asking for. And just have, maybe have your guy meet with our guy and do lunch and make everything nice. And I just, but I was surprised that some people, I guess it's known all the way down to Boca Raton. People have heard of this dog park. I don't know if people are coming all the way from there, I guess, maybe they are. But it's something, you know, it's, I think it's a good thing to do. It's just, it's just that we need some, you know, I like it. I'd just like to have some remuneration. We have a 99-year lease on that. And so I'd like some remuneration for, you know, for, if you're going to expand it, I'd like something for our Jockey Club in return. And so, that's just all. I don't know when that's on the agenda. I just heard last night at our meeting that it's going to be on today's agenda. And so, I would just urge you to just, you know, kind of do that, make it nice and, you know, do all that. So, thank you.
We don't typically comment on public comment, but for people in the room and those who might be following online, we will be discussing this topic under General Business, Item A. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Frank Lamont. My wife and I lived at 1813 Coconut Palm, Bobcat Trail for over 10 years. We love the community. Thank you for your efforts. Currently, the CDD Board is spending about $150,000, $170,000 in beautification in the tamages for me on planting trees, shrubs, palms, et cetera, as well as the residents, which I'm one of them. One of the problems we have, and I'm sure the Board knows, that there's a golf competition to the community. It's privately owned and it is in bankruptcy. He has 11 trees down on the property. Four in particular are laying literally feet from the walkway through Bobcat Trail. And it's unsightly. It's just a mess. I called Northport offices and I was told that you have enforcement for property standards and et cetera, but not trees. And I don't want to be looking at that mess for years. It's going to affect people coming in thinking that's the way we keep the property in there, and it isn't. If there's anything can be done to remove those four trees, you drag down the main street of Bobcat Trail. And that's all you can say. It's just, it's a mess. They're down completely flat, they're dead. And I don't know if you have the empowerment, which I was told you don't, if you can get it, especially now and with our growth and what's happening here and beyond, it would be appreciated because I don't want to have to see those trees for years and years. I really don't. I know with the property situation, when you go in, you can prepare the thing, place a lien on the property, and it's reimbursed at the time the property is mis-sold. Don't know what's going to happen to the golf course. I know it's been a while. I've got some people interested in it, I guess. But if you can get those four trees removed somehow and have the empowerment to do it, it would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. On to item number three announcements. Item 23-0436. City Clerk, can you please read the announcements?
Current vacancies and upcoming expirations for boards and committees. The current vacancies for the following boards and committees include the Art Advisory Board, Audit Committee, Charter Review Advisory Board, Citizens Tax Oversight Committee, Community Economic Development Advisory Board, Environmental Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, Veterans Park Advisory Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Upcoming expirations for the following boards and committees. Charter Review Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Citizens Tax Oversight Committee, Environmental Advisory Board, and Veterans Park Advisory Committee. Sarasota County Advisory Council vacancies. One resident of Northport to serve on the Bicycle Pedestrian Trail Advisory Committee. One resident of Northport to serve on the Citizens Oversight Committee for School Facility Planning. One resident of Northport to serve on the Parks Advisory and Recreation Council. If anyone would like more information, please see the City Clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. On to the consent agenda. City Manager, have any items been pulled for discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 4D, which is 23-0468, as well as 4L, which is 23-0570.
Thank you for that. So I am requesting a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead.
I move to approve the items in the consent agenda, pulling items 4D and 4L for discussion.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda, pulling items D and L for discussion. Motion maker is Commissioner Emmerich, seconded by Commissioner McDowell. Anything to that? Let's vote, please. Hopefully, we can get an electronic vote. And that motion passes five to zero. City Manager, who pulled those items?
Pulled items were pulled by Commissioner McDowell.
Okay, Commissioner McDowell, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. So regarding the FDOT transportation safety grant, I understand this is a grant. In the legislative text, there was a sentence that stood out and caused me to ask the question and pull this based on the information I received. Legislative text says, "Northport has excessive workforce fatalities and injuries." When I read that, I went, "Holy mackerel, where have I been?" So I asked for the data. Upon receiving the data, in which you guys all received copies, we've had zero fatalities and only one injury. And I don't mean to diminish the injury. It was a severe injury. And all injuries and crashes are, you know, troublesome for the person that's involved. But I don't disagree with the grant submittal. But I have to wonder if it is accurately being submitted based on what I read. And I don't understand why we would need to overstate excessive fatalities and injuries when there was one.
For the record, Valerie Malinowski, Grants Division Manager. So as of this morning at 9:32 a.m., we received a summary from the Florida Department of Transportation. In Attachment 3 of the agenda item, there's a matrix. And in that matrix, it states that city of Northport is, has the fifth highest work zone-related crash and injuries and fatalities, which to FDOT's eyes, and FDOT's eyes, that's excessive.
In the state?
In the state. Correct. And that data includes the years of 2017 through 2021. And FDOT has reported that there are 203 work zone-related crashes during that five-year period. Three of those crashes involve fatalities. The fatalities were on I-75 in 2017. There was a fatality on 41 at Southford, South Southford, in 2018. And there was a fatality, let's see here, on US 41 at West Villages Parkway in 2019. So, I have pronounced, because I received it just before the meeting, which I can pass to all of you. There's a table attached here. So, that high ranking allows us to apply for the grant. Otherwise, we wouldn't be allowed to apply, so.
Ms. Malinowski, when you're done, if you would like to provide those to City Clerk, she can get them to us.
I sure will. Thank you. And I'm sorry it came so late. And I do appreciate the conversation because when we read things, and I'm sitting there thinking, I've lived here all this time and I've never heard of a fatality in the past few years, especially in a work zone. Now, I-75, when they were widening I-75, and they were widening 41, those are like outside of our control. Northport fatalities and injuries, I would assume, is based on Northport roads, not something outside of our jurisdiction. So, I appreciate the conversation. Again, like I said, I don't dispute applying for the grant. I just wanted to get clarity and I'm glad you got the email from FDOT.
No problem.
Seeing no additional questions or comments, I'm requesting a motion on this item.
A motion, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the application to FDOT regarding the grant for workforce, work zone enforcement.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the application to the State of Florida Department of Transportation Highway Safety for a grant of $100,000. The motion maker is Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Emmerich. Please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. On to item L. Commissioner, that's you as well.
Thank you, ma'am. I am curious, has Representative Stube's office already received this list of appropriations?
He has.
Yes, he has.
Yes. And he supports them both. So he's-
So if he's received the list, why are we approving it after the fact?
So, I can still withdraw it.
I'm not asking you to withdraw.
So, it's informative in nature to let you guys know that we've, what we've submitted, so.
And I appreciate that it's informative in nature. But had we had the opportunity, I would have liked to have added another item for consideration. And now we don't have that opportunity. And I'm sorry, this is not a Director or Charter Officer's decision as to what these priorities should be. This is a commission direction. This is so frustrating for me. I would have liked to have added the I-75 and Toledo Blade interchange improvements because both interchange improvements are equally important. And now that they have received these appropriation requests already, it's too late. And you acted, in my opinion, without the authority. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I don't know why.
City Manager.
Just to clarify, this funding request was handled in the same way as other grants are handled and it would turn into a grant if we received it. In other grant applications, I believe the Commission has given the go-ahead and the authority for staff to move forward. And as those grants are brought back to you once they are awarded for your consideration, then that's where you approve them. And so this right here should all align in that sort of same format.
Word grant is not in the legislative text, so.
Commissioner, I'm happy to give you the floor to make a motion, but-
Oh, sorry.
Public comment. But I do want to admonish you to retain a respectful tone when you're speaking with staff. Go ahead, public comment.
It was directed to the City Manager, not staff.
City Manager or staff?
No, he's a charter officer that we appointed.
Go ahead, City Clerk. Jeffrey Scott?
I wasn't going to address this agenda item till I heard the city official speak. The Northport City Commission has the authority to fund or defund any or all city departments. Northport City Commission has the authority to fund or defund any and all city departments. The defunding of city spending is a vital part of our city government's checks and balances. There can be serious consequences if we refuse these checks and allow unchecked spending to continue. We must further understand that we are dealing with unchecked power by way of this city's current administration. Today, with the tyranny of an ever-expanding local government bureaucracy, and the result is the erosion of the public trust. Simply put, does the city of Northport act within their delegated authority? No, they do not. Their power steps outside their delegated authority and, in my opinion, remains unchecked and ill-defined. Unfortunately, that is exactly what we have here in the city of Northport. Our city officials authorize powers not permitted or defined in our city's charter. And as a result, the city of Northport has failed miserably in their oversight and accountability. Will the Northport City Commission ever hold their rogue charter officers accountable? Thank you.
City Clerk, is there any more public comment on this item? Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any requests to speak, so I will break. Oh, it's not working. There we go. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, this is for a grant, correct? This is for appropriations for a grant money. This is not something we approved from our-
City Manager?
Correct. Yeah, it is a funding request that I believe, according to our grants manager, said will turn into a grant. So it will come back before you.
Ms. Malinowski, do you have something to add?
No, that's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's it.
I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item L 23-0570.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Emmerich, seconded by Vice Mayor White, to authorize the City Manager to submit Sumter Boulevard I-75 interchange and new police headquarters projects for consideration under the fiscal year 2024 federal community projects funding request. Let's vote. I'm last to the party. And that motion fails four to zero. Excuse me, four to one. Math challenged. Commissioner McDowell, do you care to comment?
I will. I would have agreed to the appropriations. I do not disagree with the appropriations. I disagree with how this was handled and that the Commission did not get an opportunity to weigh in. And that is why I dissent it.
Moving on to presentation, item number six B. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Six B is item 23-0640. Sarasota County Schools Presentation Regarding the Design of a New High School in Welland Park. With us today, we do have several school members. I believe Jody Davis, the Chief Operating Officer, will come up and lead the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much. City Manager-
City manager, a pleasure. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak at such a special meeting. I will comment. I know they've left, but I met Mr. Matthews several years ago when I was the Director of Transportation for Sarasota County Schools. I met him at the Boys and Girls Club, and he was advocating for more transportation routes from our schools to the after-school programs at the club. It was a wonderful meeting. He's a wonderful advocate, and it was a pleasure meeting him. And I will mention, the other, and these connections are sometimes, they fascinate me, but in the conversation this morning, it was mentioned about Mr. Matthews and his part he played in location of Northport High School on that property. And as I was thinking about opening the presentation today, I was going to mention that the last high school that the school board built as a result of population growth on a green site, a brand-new site, was Northport High School. And so it's amazing, those connections, as we have these conversations and move forward. So we are super proud to be here today to talk about our newest high school, which is in the planning and design phases. It's the high school within the Welland Park community. We are very, very excited about this, because it is the first high school I've been able to be a part of building since I've been with the school board, and our team has built in a long time. And so we're excited about the, to bring a new high school to the city of Northport, number one. But number two, in terms of our planning, I want to mention Diane Comanati works very closely with your planning departments to understand population growth, work very closely with developers to make sure we're citing a school, or schools, in a location that makes sense for the community. We want to be an asset to the community. We want to be an asset and seen as part of the community whenever we build. And so our location within the Welland Park community, we're super excited about, because we think it's the perfect spot, it's the perfect land. And the other thing we have never done, which we're excited about, is locate two schools on the same property. So when we talk about building the new Welland Park High School within Welland Park, we're also considering and moving towards funding a K-8 on that same property, which allows us to look at some efficiencies in terms of bus loops and staffing and the whole nine yards. And I think a lot of benefit for, at the end of the day, what we want is opportunities for kids and the programs we can offer at these sites. So we're super excited to talk a lot about that today. I will say, as I turn it over to our Director of Construction, Jane Drager, to take you through kind of the presentation, look at the facility, what we're very proud of in the school district is that we have our program drives building and not the other way around. And so what we really start to do is talk about, what are the types of programs we want to offer the students who live in Northport? And what might those programs look like in today's society, in terms of innovation, technology in the classrooms? That's the start of the conversation, and then the building comes around those concepts and ideas. So we're super excited about being able to do this within the city of Northport. And so with that, let me turn it over to our Director of Construction, Jane Drager, to take you through what the new school will look like. So Jane?
Thank you. We appreciate being here today. It's very exciting for us. At the suggestion of John Lizinski, who has been bar none, one of the best developers we've had to work with, and really kind of visioning where education components go and what needs to be married into that, we picked a prototype that Zizkovich Architects, Jose Marguido, is going to kind of run you through, that was being built in Charlotte County. It's going to open this August, if you want a preview of kind of what's coming. And we spent the last six months kind of customizing it to make it Sarasota's. And so with that short introduction, I would like to turn it over to Jose.
Thank you, Jane. Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay. Point a little bit here. It's my pleasure to be here this morning and share with you, I think one of the most innovative schools are going to be built in the state of Florida. This is a 21st century school, and you'll see some things here that are a little different as I get into the presentation. So the children of this community are truly going to be in an environment prepared, or the most exciting times yet to come. The district has done a phenomenal job customizing it for these unique programs. It's a three-story school. I'm going to share with you the floor plan that you see here. Oh, there it is. And the school is a single-building school. Those are the safest kinds of schools you could build today instead of a multi-building campus. With all the news we hear of concerns for school security, that's one of the chief drivers in this facility. So once the children come in, it's pretty much hermetically sealed, and they're all safe in one environment, opposed to multiple buildings. That's a key driver of how the building is designed. The front door is clear, and you'll see it in a rendering in a moment. It's a clear entrance, so people don't have to wander around where the front door of the building is, and it addresses the community in a very civic way, and I'll show you a rendering in a moment. And it's important to embrace and invite the community in. So it has a welcome plaza, which is very important for students to wait for their parents and also feel well-received, and the community is received. Of course, off the welcome plaza, there's a welcome center. So there's a parent center, where the parents come in, there's a place to sit, there's a place to wait for the counselor. So it has a lobby, if you will, with high security. And one of the unique things in this school is that it has a central commons, much like a university. It's the central space that all the students gather at one time. So that's why it's a high-secure building. They're all in one place, you can see where they're at, easy to supervise. What John had mentioned, it has an innovation zone. It has some of the most innovative technology labs, career technical types of spaces to really prepare the kids for the jobs of the future. And that whole wing that you see there in this purple color is specifically designed with unique programs, including agriculture, marine biology, computer science, STEM, all that's come in this area here. All of the classrooms are wellness-designed, meaning they all have natural lighting and views in there, because the site is spectacular, as you're about to see in a moment. And it has a championship gymnasium in it. It's going to be a fantastic sports and athletic program. You'll see the site in a moment as well. But not to forget also the fine arts. So it has a large auditorium and a fine arts wing that goes along with that. It's a three-story building, so the three stories are pushed in the back. In the front, there's only two stories. That's where the front entrance is. And there's a student union right in the middle of the space, which is this pink space in here. It's a library plus. The reason it's a student union is because counseling is also oriented in, or placed in this area, not only to provide guidance, but also career and college selection and those types of things. So the library is unique in that sense. And that's what it kind of looks like there. On the third floor, which is towards the back here, this is where all of the sciences are going to be located. Got 21st century science labs, science demonstration areas, and the other wing is a classroom wing. So you could see the building kind of cascades towards the west there. This is what it starts to look like. The building has been influenced by the landscape and vegetation and natural colors that you see, so that's what this area is here. We're looking at the welcome plaza. This is the drop-off zone here. There's the parent loop in here, it has a large extended parent loop. And this is the little brother that's coming sometime in the future that was just mentioned, the K-8. So the site will be shared with that K-8. This is what the site looks like today. And the presentation this morning that was referenced showed a lot about future, right? So what's it look like when it comes in? And that's why we did this animation to kind of show you the wetlands area, as you see in this area here. The school's been designed around that and preserved that. You'll see it come in in a moment. We're flying by the site. These are the wetland area, that's the drainage ditch that's currently there. And when the school appears, it incorporates the wetlands and the natural features into the design of the school. This is the high school over here. This is the K-8 here. But it also extends and embraces the community with walkways and connection points. As we circle the site here, you can see that the way the building has arranged itself around the wetlands that are there, we maintain as many of the trees as we can. This is the bus loop along this side, the auditorium that I shared with you, the three-story, which is really hidden from everything. And you see the practice fields, the stadium, basketball courts, and the drop-off zone in the front. So it's truly a spectacular 21st century school. It's like none other. And it's designed in a very specific way, as if Mother Nature put it there herself. That was the design intent of the school, to preserve the wetland. It'll have about 2,500, excuse me, 2,100 students and 3,250 square feet, more or less. And we're just completing our construction documents, and we expect to break ground later on this summer. It'll be a 2025 opening. So we're, we have our building partner here. That's actually pricing. That's a view of the school a little closer in. With that, I'll be able to answer any questions. The commissioner.
Thank you for that, sir. We're moving on to commission question. Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, question number one. How much did John pay you to say nice things about him? I tell you what, this is phenomenal. It is a gorgeous campus. You know, the security measures that are involved are A-plus. That's exactly what we need in today's society, which is sad. But thank you for taking all of that into consideration. I cannot wait to see this built and be able to tour it. The Performing Arts Center, so drastically needed here for our children. And, you know, the outside complexes for sports and everything, it just looks top-notch all the way around. So congratulations, and thank you so very much for bringing this to our community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes, you mentioned you have, you built one in Charlotte County. Is that Babcock Ranch?
Pardon me? No, no, it's Audrey Rogers', and it's actually Collier County. It's...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you said Charlotte County. All right. And then I noticed you have beautiful trees in your rendering. I noticed that they usually are put in the design, like the picture, but I'm hoping that that's a reality, you actually will have trees.
That's a great question. And one of the reasons we say that we place the building as if Mother Nature put it there is we're trying to preserve as many of the trees as possible, which is why the building has the configuration that it has. So it's kind of designed around pockets of the vegetation that is there.
Right, right. But you showed trees taller than the roof line, so typically, you don't see that at schools, unfortunately. And I echo what Commissioner Emmerich said, it's beautiful, and, you know, I still have a valid teaching license. Yeah. You know, this is beautiful, a brand-new facility like that. And this is not going to be a charter school. This is not the charter school, correct? Okay.
No, that's correct. School district school.
Right, okay. All right, so thank you very much.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yes, fabulous. Oh, my gosh, I'm excited to see this. Curious, you mentioned the K-8. So if the high school is slated to begin in fall of '25, when do you expect to break ground for the K-8, and when do you expect it to be completed for, or is it too early to say?
No, that's a great question. We just had a conversation with our board through a workshop about a week ago, I believe, a week and a half, two weeks ago, where we took the capital budget to them in terms of our planning phases. So right now, our K-8 is funded for next summer funding. So what we would do then is if that continues to remain where it is, we would start that project design and everything next summer. And typically, it's three years until we're in a facility. The conversation with the board, and we'll be having more conversation over this next year, is Ms. White mentioned, is it a charter school? There is a charter school opening in Welland Park, serving a K population, and so we need to evaluate what population they're going to bring into their facility. And so we will continue to monitor that over the next year, and our board will make adjustments on our timing of our K-8 to make sure we're not overbuilding within the Welland Park community. So more to come on that, but it's currently slated for funding next school year.
When is the K-8 charter school going to open then?
So as I understand it, and I may be wrong, because I'm not in all those conversations, but I believe that it's slated to open this coming August. And so we'll have a year to kind of see how that goes, and kind of what population going to the charter school. And then we have a year to kind of decide how that impacts the opening of our K-8 and our timing.
Fantastic. It was a great presentation. And 2,100 students, that's a very large school. Sounds like one that I went to in Chicago. I do want to comment, I have a feeling we're going to have a little bit of a rivalry going on once this is open, NPHS versus WPHS. Look forward to those games. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Stokes?
Well, living in Welland Park, I have to say, I'm delighted to be at this school, coming onboard. I mean, it's spectacular. It really is, and much needed for a lot of the families that moved into Welland Park. I know education schools were a concern, and I'm delighted that Northport now offers and will be offering a wonderful state-of-the-art school for all our Welland Park children. My one question is, since the capacity of this school is 2,100 students, I don't know if Welland Park yet has that many kids ready to hop into high school. How, and I don't know if it's your venue, how does, how will this integrate with existing Northport, legacy Northport students? Will there be some cross-pollinization here? Will some of the kids from legacy Northport be attending this school for a period of years? Or how's that all work?
Great question. And so I'm going to let our Director of Planning, she runs that process, and every time we build a new school, there's a redistricting process that goes along with that, and I'll let Ms. Comanati take you through what that looks like.
So yes, there'll be a boundary advisory committee formed that will kind of go over where those students are going to come from. So we'll look at both, you know, right now, that area is dis- disentithized, so we'll look at both Venice High and Northport High and see where we can take students from. There's also a part of that area that's districted to Lemon Bay High School as of now, so we'll be looking to take those students back in Sarasota County to go to this school.
Apart from Northport or Venice and Englewood?
Yes.
Northport as well?
We'll kind of look at that whole area as a committee, once that committee is formed.
And that committee is typically made up of all the affected schools, members from all the affected schools. So somebody from Northport High, somebody from Venice High, community members become part of that committee. So it's really a joint decision. Ms. Comanati's team provides options and what that might look like and transportation ways into. But it's a whole process, but that's a great question, and we're about to get into that with a couple of our new schools. So it's a great, it's community collaborative kind of process that we get into.
Yeah, we'll have the principals, we'll have teachers, we'll have parents all involved in that process.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. It was a great one. I'm very, very impressed with the plans. And I was especially happy to see plans for K through 8. A lot of residents in the city, as we talk about the almost unbelievable growth in the city of Northport, one of the first questions I get is, where are all those kids going to go to school? So I'm glad that in at least the western area of the city, we have an answer. I have an answer to that question. I would also like to stay for the record that I would be delighted to see an integrated student body at both of those schools, if I may use that term. So I'll be very, very interested to see what the districting looks like. Very interested in that. And I have one question, and it really saddens me to have to ask this question, but will there be metal detectors at the front entranceway of this high school?
So that's a great question, you know, and we talked a little bit about safety and security in the design of the school, and so that's foremost in all of our designs currently, kind of the way you lay the building out, the entrances. And you know, when all of our schools currently have a single point of entrance, where we've got bulletproof glass, we've got screening mechanisms to get into the campus with people sitting in the front. As we look at kind of what our next phase is, our evolution of safety and security in Sarasota County schools is, all options are on the table. And we really look to best practices going on across, you know, not only across the state, but across the nation as well, in terms of, we want to be on the forefront, we want to make sure our schools are as safe as possible. And so those are the conversations that are we currently having with our school board in terms of what are next steps? And so I can't say yes or no to that. All I can say is it's part of the conversations, and I know our board is committed to making sure that whatever it is we have to do to make sure our students, our staff is safe on campus, we're going to do. So more to come on additional developments in that area.
Great, I'll be looking forward to that. Given that I'm not seeing any more lights on, City Clerk, do we have any online public comment on this topic? In-house? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I just have one more quick thing to add. In the presentation, one of the things that we have been working so closely with the developer on that I failed to mention is our trails are going to tie into the community's trails. And at the end of the project, we're looking at converting the current wetlands over to the West Villages Improvement District, so they will be maintaining and building that trail. And that's something that typically developers want us to pay for those trails, because our students use those trails. students use those trails. And so that's one of the things that is going through here. Yeah, at the very beginning. Oh, was, okay. Never mind. We don't have the graphic on that, but it's the wetlands that you saw.
Right.
Those wetlands will have a trail that goes around them between the wetlands and our school, and they will tie into the Welland Park community trails.
Thank you for that.
Very nice.
I appreciate that. Any other final comments before we move on? Thank you very much.
So much.
That was a great presentation. Our next agenda item is public hearings. I am very much tempted to take our lunch break now rather than having to interrupt those conversations. So let us pause this meeting, and we will resume at 12:15. Thank you.
...water use. In preparation for a storm, the gates are opened as needed to convey floodwaters. The city has an ongoing program to inspect...
It is 12:15, and we are resuming the Northport Commission's regular meeting. The same charter officers and commissioners are here on the dais. Are here on the dais, and Vice Mayor White will be with us shortly. So we are on to public hearings. Item number 2023-10, and Vice Mayor has joined us. City Clerk, oh, oh, I am going to need a motion to request that City Clerk read this item by title only. We have a motion on the floor to direct City Clerk to read this item by title only. The motion maker is Commissioner Emmerich, seconded by Commissioner Stokes. Let's vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Go ahead, City Clerk.
Ordinance number 2023-10, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida repealing criteria relating to the Playful City USA program from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Powers and Duties, amending the code of the city of Northport, Florida, Section 4-162 regarding powers and duties of the Northport Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. This is your item.
No, this is not my item.
Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk, on the agenda, but yes.
That's code for City Manager. Okay, City Manager, take it away.
Yes, thank you for the item. We do have our Parks and Recreation Director, Sandy Funheller, here for the item, but this item is asking you to adjust the duties of the Board and Commissioner of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Good afternoon, Parks and Recreation Director Sandy Funheller. This is just amending that ordinance. We had inserted some language that had to do with the Kaboom Playful City USA program. That is no longer happening. It discontinued in 2017. And so this is just cleaning that up, taking out the language that was specifically put in related to that program, and then also making some formatting and grammar changes to it for clarity.
Thank you, Director. I'm opening up the floor to Commissioner questions or comments. Commissioner McDowell.
Yes, Mayor, I only have one, and I don't know if it's new language or if it's like a carryover. If you look at line 44, it says, "The Advisory Board shall make written and verbal recommendations to the city commission," blah, blah, blah. When the board makes a recommendation to the commission, it's usually approved at the meeting, written up by the liaison, presented to the city manager, city manager then forwards it to the commission, commission then decides if they put it on the agenda. How can that all be done verbally? So I'm looking to possibly remove the word "or" verbally, or "and" verbally.
They're going to have to have the discussion at the advisory board meeting, and then whatever actions they take, the staff liaison puts that in a memo to the city manager, and then that goes out to commission. So I think it's covering both bases, their discussion during the meeting and then the written memo that would come from staff liaison. But if there's language that needs to change, we can certainly do that.
If I may, Mayor, for clarity, the only reason why I was looking to strike "and" verbal is that way then a board member can't come, like, and give public comment and say, "Hey, we recommend this," and we go, "Whoa," because this has happened. And that's why I was looking to have that removed. That's all, that's the only discussion point I had, Mayor.
Do you want some vote on that? Do you need it?
I'm going to defer to City Attorney. If there's any concern with taking that language out, then I think we can do that.
There's no concern with it. The advisory boards on occasion would, could make presentations to the commission. That would be a verbal recommendation if they didn't say it by written. I've seen it happen both ways. I think that's the reason why that's in there.
Mayor, if I could add on to that, they also have the option, too, that I've seen some of them do, in the same aspect of they can, by majority vote, select a member of their board to come and give a public comment to the commission on an item.
Thank you for that, City Clerk.
My question was...
Hang on just one second. Commissioner and Vice Mayor has her light on.
Yeah, because it says, "shall make written and verbal recommendations," and piggybacking off of what you said, times they have come before us and in the past, I've seen, and I've done that as a member of the advisory board, making, talking to the commission. So I think that just encompasses that, that it allows for verbal communication as well as written, right? Was not the intention of that.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think really the ethics of our boards and the code of conduct for our boards really does preclude someone from coming to give public comment representing the board. Certainly, they can do that as an individual. They have a right to do that. So I think the language as is covers all of those eventualities.
My light went off, but I still wanted to ask the question. It disappeared.
And I'm not picking you up for some reason. I have a little faulty thing here, so Commissioner, go ahead.
No, my main concern with this was, it'd be the same in joint meetings. If we had a joint meeting with the advisory board, you know, that's all.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other lights on. City Clerk, do we have any public comment online for this item? Anyone in-house?
Yeah.
Then I'm closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
Make a motion.
Thank you, go ahead.
I move to continue ordinance number 2023-10 to second reading on April 25, 2023.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Vice Mayor White, seconded by Commissioner Emmerich, to continue ordinance number 2023-10 to second reading on April 25. If there's nothing...
23rd. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have 25th.
That's me, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm not seeing anything to that, so let's vote, please. And that motion passes five to zero. Onto ordinance number 2023-11. Looking for a motion to direct City Clerk to read this item by title only. So moved. We have a motion on the floor to request City Clerk to read this item by title only. The motion maker is Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Emmerich. Let's vote. And that motion passes five to zero. City Clerk, please read.
Ordinance number 2023-11, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida relating to the Citizen Tax Oversight Committee repealing Resolution Number 97-R-14, amending the code of the city of Northport, Florida, Chapter 4, Boards and Committees, to create Article 5, Citizen Tax Oversight Committee, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'm opening the floor to Commissioner questions. Not seeing any City Clerk. Do we have any online or in-house public comment?
We do not.
And I'm closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
Make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to continue ordinance number 2023-11 to second reading on April 25.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to continue ordinance number 2023-11 to April 25. The motion maker is Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Stokes. If there's nothing more to that, let's vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Moving right along to ordinance number 2023-16, looking for a motion to direct City Clerk to read this item by title only.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to direct City Clerk to read this ordinance by title only. The motion maker is Commissioner Stokes, seconded by Commissioner Emmerich. If there's nothing to that, please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. City Clerk, take it away.
Ordinance number 2023-16, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, reducing and eliminating certain fees related to Warm Mineral Springs Park, amending the code of the city of Northport, Florida, Appendix A, Section G, Parks and Recreation Fees, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As it is, the city intends to operate Warm Mineral Springs on a temporary basis until a P3 partnership is approved. Sales of multi-visit passes, 10 visits in 30 days, and annual passes with a one-year expiration date have been placed on hold. Based on the discounted rates that are extended to residents and non-residents through the sale of these passes, staff recommends the following amended pricing for commission consideration. Residents, daily of $5 per person flat fee, as well as non-resident, $7 per person flat fee. We're here to happily answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, City Manager. I'm opening the floor to Commissioner questions. Commissioner McDowell.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have an idea of how long this, these rates might be in effect?
Multiple months.
Like six months, 12 months, two months?
Until we get the contract approved, it'll be multiple months.
Okay. So because this is going to be multiple months, maybe we need to revisit it every few months to make sure we're keeping up with the expenses that we're incurring so that it's not losing any money? That's the only reason why I was asking the question.
If you would like to revisit it, ma'am, that is the choice of the commission. We're happy to provide you any information in the interim of the contract being settled on with the developer or the process we bring back in front of you as a board.
The other question that I had is, do we possibly need to have a sunsetting clause in this ordinance? I don't know, it's probably something for the city attorney. Since it is on a temporary basis, we're adopting this, should we set a sunset date? And then we automatically have to revisit it, or it automatically goes away? I don't know. I've never approved temporary kind of rates before. It's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Okay.
I've seen no answers, so they'll still be on the table until we have further discussion.
Yeah, so to think that the current answer is, we really don't know.
That is correct. I would imagine that we would come back with, you know, either we're coming back with a partnership and they are going to take over operations of the facility, or if that does not come to fruition and the direction is some other arrangement, then we would have to come back with those rates that we want to charge. There is another opportunity for the fee schedule, it's done annually through budget, so it could come back at that time as well.
Commissioner Stokes.
Yes, on the surface, I personally don't have any problem with that, except, again, and I understand the reason for the $5 to kind of make it make sense, you know, to go out and actually sell, you know, monthly or yearly or memberships. But again, it goes back to what I spoke to yesterday. I really believe, since we are talking about taxpayer dollars here, I ask once again if staff could not find a way to pull together the costs of operating the springs today and now, in the here and now, with our current staffing. On a budgeted basis, we need really, I think, if this can turn into a multiple-month kind of thing, we need to know what it has cost on our taxpayers on a monthly basis to operate this, because I think it goes to people's perception as to whether or not a P3 is an important thing to do, or can the city actually look at this on an ongoing basis as something they want to run as an additional cost center coming out of taxpayers' dollars. So again, for the reasons I said yesterday and the reasons today, I think we really need that, but I have no real problem with the fees. I mean, it makes sense.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes, it's my understanding that the fees are based on if they were to buy an annual pass. That's, is that the breakdown? Or...
No, it's not.
Okay.
The proposed fees are based on the 30-visit pass rates.
30-visit, right.
There's also a 10-visit pass rate and an annual pass.
Okay, all right. So that's what that's based on. And also, if, can people access other parts of the property, like the 62 acres, if they pay their $5, or is that closed off? I'm sorry, I haven't been there.
No, they cannot access that. There is fencing around the property.
Okay, does that include the back, the whole...
That includes the entire property for security reasons.
Okay, thank you.
So help me understand that, because I've been there and didn't see it, the entire 62 acres.
The fencing was there before, it was just farther back. You didn't see it on the property. Now, you, it's right there. Obviously, we have damage to the buildings. We do not want people having any access to those buildings while they're there at the property.
Right, just a comment from me. I think it's a great idea to provide some reduced fees, given how long people waited to use that facility. But I'm pretty adamant that we not use taxpayer money to run this facility, so as long as any shortage is coming out of the Warm Mineral Springs Fund, I'm good with the reduced fees. But I'm also inclined, I think when we review as a body the real costs of maintaining that property, and again, I don't want to send our director into a panic, but if we don't do a P3, then we've got a lot of thinking and talking to do about what we do with that property.
So we will provide the information based on the, it's through September operations for this fiscal year, what that's going to cost. And we're also preparing a budget, an annual budget for fiscal year '24 that would reflect if we took over operations, this is how we would see it happening.
Right, and all of the costs associated with it. Vice Mayor?
No, I...
You're good? Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, and to piggyback off what Commissioner Stokes said, I'm not just interested in the expenses, I'd also be interested in the revenues and also the attendance numbers, kind of like what you guys have prepared in the past.
Sure, and we're tracking that. I can tell you that the first four days that we've been open, since we've reopened on Friday, we've had 5,576 people come through.
Three days?
Four days.
5,000?
5,576. And I, and based on historical data for the month of April previous year, the average was about 600 people a day.
Well, free is a worry.
It's free, you know. Somewhere in there, we'll balance out.
So maybe we need to put like the first five days that were free as a separate line item for expenses and, and revenues, because there were no revenues, I'm sure, kind of keep that out of the equation, because we don't want to skew those numbers. But we really do need to have that breakdown. And I, I, I am not against the charge of $5 and $7. I think that's fine, that's fair, it's awesome, but I don't think it should go on forever. I think, I really think this commission body needs to review that in three months to make sure we are not losing any money, and to the mayor's point, taxpayers aren't picking up the bill. And it, this is why I was looking to have some type of sunsetting or an automatic kickback that, hey, in six months, I'm sorry, in three months, city manager knows to create an agenda item for discussion to revisit this subject. Just kind of throwing it out there for discussion. Why I brought it up.
City manager, when do you think staff might be in a position to bring that pro forma back to us?
Are you talking about the one that Commissioner Stokes asked for yesterday?
Yes.
That more detailed version will take a while to put together the scenario that you asked for. What we have right now is the information that we currently know, which is what it operated on before. You mentioned and you referenced all of the expenses, putting all of the expenses in there, but you're also asking us, how does that relate to what it would look like if we took it over and we kept doing it forever? And what does that look like compared to a proposal or an offer that's going to be in front of you as well? And I think that's a more detailed request than what we have right now. And I would think that you would want those to come back together when you do have an offer to compare it with, with a developer offer that would show you a, a pathway that you may want to choose. If you would like for us to start today, or I guess on last Friday, and showing you the expenses from that day for a month, and then the next month, and then showing you what that looks like as far as revenue and expenses, I think that that would be a valid request, but to have the long-term pro forma that looks like something to compare it to with a proposal, I think that's a little bit more detailed.
Well, I, I'm sort of thinking, again, the, the only issue I'm working is I don't want to see the springs being supplemented out of the general fund. So it would be useful to me to have that information, so starting Friday, and then looking forward, let's say, three months, that was sort of the timeframe suggested by Commissioner McDowell, and then what's the corresponding balance in the Warm Mineral Springs Fund? Because again, I just want to make sure that this property is self-funding, and we can take a short-term view now and a longer-term view if, if we need to, and I think we will. Commissioner Emrich?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I agree with the city manager on you saying on the lower approach on the costs, the actual costs and the maintenance going forward. I was actually, I don't know how long we're going to be looking at the P3 process or whatever. I was, I was leaning more towards, since we do have money in the Warm Mineral Springs budget and everything like that, and given staff time, I was looking at, I don't think we're going to get in too much trouble if we extended it to six months, you know, doing that with the day-to-days, and, and that'll even actually give us a better picture on how we're going throughout the summer, and then into fall, when we do start talking about the P3 process down the road, this is going to be actual numbers as well. So that's, that's the way I was looking at it.
And Commissioner, the reason why I say multiple months is, we are working through the negotiation process with the team and getting the other vendor on board, which is going to be an agenda item that I've talked to you all about in our one-on-ones that's upcoming. So once we get that vendor on board who can then help go through the proposal to help create the offer, then that's what comes back in front of you, and our goal is to bring you that this summer. Before the fall, that's our goal, because it'll take multiple months to sort of get them on board, get them to do what they need to do, and then put an offer in front of you. And in the interim of that, I, we believe that there will not be any effect to the general fund or the taxpayer's dollars based on the amount of money that we do have in that account. So whatever frequency you would like for us to report to you is fine, as long as we all understand it'll be multiple months before we get to what you really want, which is that clear picture of what does it look like from a pro forma standpoint of an in-house operation versus an external partnership.
Right, and, and that's what I was getting at. I, I don't think it needs to be rushed into, because we do have sufficient funds in that account, and we're not going to get nowhere near of depleting those accounts.
Right.
We are allowing the citizens that use the springs have a discount while we're going through everything here, and that's why I wanted to prolong it rather than rush you through, because the P3 process is our priority here, and I don't want to get off of that by going down another slope. I, I think we're okay with the numbers that we've talked about, and, and I think we're fine, but if you wanted to come back with a check-in in six months, that's where I'm at, and it's like, I doubt we're going to be in dire need of having to transfer funds. So that, that's where I'm at on this.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Stokes.
Yeah, um, city manager kind of really addressed most of what I was concerned about, and, and I agree, pro forma is going to take some time, you know, if you look at it on an ongoing basis. I'd love to see like a monthly report on revenues and expenses on a month-by-month, and then just be in a position to revisit the fee structure, only because we may find that if we can bump it a couple of dollars, month two, or month three, or month four, along the way, we wouldn't have to dip into that fund. If, if it were to ever come to pass that the decision of the commission and city were to not entertain a P3 and we were going to operate, we're going to need every dollar that's sitting in those funds available to do summer medial actions on the properties, whether it's tear them down, or whether it's preserve them and fix them up some. So I'm just concerned that we don't drop the price to $5 and just leave it there for two, three, four, five, six months on end for no reason. The truth is, people that enjoy the springs will pay $10. I mean, we accommodate it to some degree because it was closed and all that makes sense, but the reality is, those people who enjoy the springs should pay a fair and reasonable price, and we, we have that pervasive mentality sometimes throughout our parks and recs and quality of life offering to the community. We need to appreciate that. They are quality of life issues that the city provides, but there are also costs to the citizens of our city.
City manager.
I just want to say, Commissioner Stokes, based on what you said yesterday regarding the, the, the pro forma of the internal operations, we are going to see if one of the external vendors can do that, so that we can put a little bit more detail and credibility, so someone's not just trusting the city's numbers on that, which would hopefully be in alignment with the third-party usage that we've used for the developers' process.
Trust our finance people are pretty darn good. You too. But that's fine. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that when you, when you said, when the comment was made of possibly coming back and changing rates, it, it's not a quick process. It would be coming back with an ordinance again and two readings. So if there's any sense that these are not the rates you want to go with, we would want to know that today and, and put the correct rates in.
Correct, whatever frequency that you choose, that's what we're looking for direction on.
I see, I have a couple lights on, but a quick question. How are we paying for the trailer rental?
It's coming out of the current operating budget for Warm Mineral Springs.
For Warm Mineral Springs, okay, thank you. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, so the trailer rental, how much is that a month?
We, it's not a monthly fee, it was a, you had to pay for a year, and I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I have no problem starting with the recommended numbers. I assume staff looked at it and weighed the expenses to the revenue and kind of gave an equality to revenues and expenses, maybe a little bit more revenue. I would hope a little bit more revenue instead of more expenses, but I really think we do need to revisit this and just make sure, once we get the expenses in and the revenues in, to make sure that our Warm Mineral Springs account is not being depleted with these rates. That's the only reason why I suggested it. I, I started it through, you know, three months. If, if the commission wants to go a little bit longer or a little bit shorter, I'm amenable to it. I just don't want this to be for multiple months carried on, knowing that it takes two readings and time to create the ordinance. That's all.
Commissioner Emrich?
Yeah, the one thing that Commissioner Stokes brought up was about adjusting the rates. That's what I was going to talk about, and you, you clarified that quite a bit. If we're going to do any rate adjustments, let's do it now and keep it constantly, you know, because the, the thing about it is, is I would hate to get the customers back into the springs, and then a month from now, oh, they're going to raise the rates. No, let's, we've been shut down for so long, we're going to pick something, stick with it, go with it, until we get to this process of the P3. So what is the, a regular admission rate going in?
$15 for residents and $20 for non-residents. Residents is Sarasota County resident.
That's a, that's a daily rate.
Correct.
And, and we're proposing five and seven?
That is the option when you, when you purchase a 30-visit pass, that's what it breaks down to, is five for residents, seven for non-resident.
And, go ahead, city manager, we talked about this in the one-on-one, because I did suggest 750 and 10.
Right, and the, and our concern was, what we were, we were trying to do was make sure that we didn't price it so much without offering the other pass rates, the discounted rates which people take advantage of, then you're really pricing it up so high that people who do want to come for 30-day visits or an annual pass are now sort of paying a lot more than what they paid before. That's what we were trying to avoid.
Right, and that's why we had that discussion, and that's why I said, you know, if we just had it at a regular rate of 750 and 10, it's half price, you know, and, and that's, you know, very amenable for most of the people, but it's the will of the board, that's what we talked about during my one-on-one.
Okay.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, just like Commissioner Pete, just the same way, I, realizing it, it takes two readings in, in the length of time, I was inclined almost 10 and 15, but I appreciate that there were people who bought packages that, that made it affordable, and, and there was a significant inconvenience to those people. They do love their springs. Probably seven and a half, and 10 would make sense. You know, again, we're going to be looking at monthly expenses, and if we find that that's a real bleeder, that could be an issue, and we might just force ourselves to come back with it, because if you look at, if 300 people a day come at $5 or $7, you're talking a couple thousand dollars a day. I'm trying to look at what the realistic, off the top of my head expenses are of running it. I mean, you got the trailer cost broken down on a monthly basis. You, you look at it, I don't think we're underwater here.
That's a very unlikely.
I, I mean, it's real rough. I don't have all the numbers, but what are we really looking at? We've got some labor there, we've got some utility costs, and we've got the rentals.
Right.
That's pretty much it.
Very unlikely.
You know, I, I like Commissioner Emrich's idea of, of a half-off. It, it just gives us a little more of a cushion, and we can make the decision and be done with it.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, I, I just brought up the idea of revisiting it as needed to make sure we're not losing money, but another way to skin that cat is to just raise the rates now, and
And we'll see the numbers.
And then we see the numbers, and if we need to fix it then, we can do that too. The last, again, last thing I want is for these expenses, because you don't have the numbers to exceed, because labor, I don't know how many people are out there, how many lifeguards, how much of our staff is out there, the trailer costs, all of that stuff costs money. Maintenance, landscaping, you know, cleaning the parking lot, all of that costs money. We don't have those expenses, and I, I, I'm not seeing $5 a day covering that.
750 and 10 might do it.
Maybe eight and 11, and we call it done.
Seven and a half.
Thank you. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, what is the cost of a 30-day pass? I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't know if you said that before, I didn't write it down.
It's in the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
It's strike through of the ordinance.
Uh, the 30-day pass for residents was $150.
Okay, and then that brings in my second question. You said residents or anybody in Sarasota County?
A resident at this location for this facility is defined as a Sarasota County resident.
Does that include, so that's, oh.
Big chunk of the Mineral Springs people live in there.
And then there was a 10-visit pass for residents that was $1,1250, and then the non-residents for that same 10-visit pass was $150.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
So I'll weigh in with an opinion. I'm very much inclined to go with the 750 or 10 or something in that vicinity. I would rather raise the fees now. I, and ASAP, at least see the operating costs and the revenue. So today, I'd, I'd like to establish a date when the rates change. I think the five and seven is a very generous determination, thanking the community for their patience while we cleaned up that property and reopened that property, but, but I'm really adamant. I, I'm concerned too that, that we not spend down the Warm Mineral Springs Fund precipitously, because we have no idea what's going to happen in the future, whether we'll be managing it or whether a third party will be managing it, and, and I don't want to not have the funds.
I, I would just ask that whatever the rates are, that you make that an even
I knew that.
You don't have to do the change.
So that we are not trying to bring change back and forth there.
Yeah.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah, and then I'll go to Commissioner McDowell.
How many bodies are on a daily basis there? Were what, open from nine to five?
Were open from nine to five. It's, if we follow the same schedule as the management company had, the only day it's closed is Christmas, so that's a, another thing to think about in our budget, and then...
Total bodies on private?
We've had anywhere from 1,200 to just about 1,500 in these last four days.
No, I mean, I mean employees.
But on average, in April, for example, in April, the total attendance, if you break that down, it was about 600 and some a day.
And how many labor, how many actual employees do we have on-site?
Uh, we have 10.
Okay.
I'm going to hold you, Commissioner, because Commissioner McDowell's been waiting.
Go ahead, ma'am. It's a great conversation. So right now, we have everything free until I think today is the last day.
Today's the last day.
Okay, so tomorrow, if somebody comes to Warm Mineral Springs, what are we charging them?
Um, that'll be, that'll depend on a future agenda item that's on today's meeting.
Okay, well, I think that conversation should come into play too, because are they comparable rates, is this?
That's, that's what we were trying to do, is make them comparable rates, so I would think whatever the decision is now, we would want to do that same or...
Later.
Or they, experience, we're calling it Experience Vintage Florida, welcome back celebration.
Okay. Because these rates also include sales tax.
Correct.
I'm more inclined to charge the $8, which includes sales tax, and $11, that includes sales tax, because if you go to 750, you're, you still got to pay the sales tax out of that 750, and they don't want to keep that change. So I think eight and 11, my opinion, further discussion.
I'm not seeing any lights on.
Yeah.
And when that hap, whoop, Commissioner Stokes?
Um, I just go to, the reason I ask the questions is, you know, I want to see that this was reasonable. If 600 people is an average in at $8, we're talking $5,000, $4,800 a day, 10 bodies at 20 an hour, I'm just pulling a number, figuring $15 plus... 20 an hour, I'm just pulling a number, figuring $15 plus pennies, whatever it is, another 1,600, 500 for utilities, maybe that's light, but we're only in at 2,300, not counting the rentals of the facilities on a daily basis. $4,800 a day pretty much covers, so we probably could do an eight and a 10, something like that. And, and we really got a comfort level here. I think we're splitting hairs, but we, again, don't want to come in solo and all of a sudden, jeez, we got $2,000, $3,000 a day, we're losing money on this, and it's going to go on, and we have to change the rates again. So that's the only reason I'm nitpicking this, but.
Commissioner Emrich, your light is on, but I just want to let you know I'm itching for a motion.
Itch away.
Itch away.
Itch away. When, when people come in to pay, and this is what I was getting at with the, the rates, do they normally use the card or do they use cash, or is it basically even on both?
I don't know the exact breakdown, but I would say it's, it's maybe 60/40, 60 on card.
Because what I'm getting at is, I was in agreement with Commissioner Stokes on the eight and the 10, because if they gave a 10, you're giving two ones back, but if it was 11, then you got to give nine bucks back in change. I just didn't want to complicate it too much, you know?
We just don't want the coins.
Ted's getting old, he's on that cash register.
We're not putting you on that cash register.
But, you know, 11 bucks is fine, but when I first started thinking, it was like eight and 10 was where I was leaning at, and Commissioner Stokes came up with that same number, so.
Do I have a brave commissioner willing to put forth a motion?
Go ahead. No, I thought you said
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to continue ordinance number 2023-16 to May, I'm sorry, April 25th with the following changes to the daily rate for residents of $8 and a daily rate for non-residents of $11.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell to continue ordinance number 2023-16, do second reading on April 25th, changing the daily rate for residents to $8 and non-residents, I think you said $10.
I said 11.
$11.
But if we need an amendment, I'll be amenable. You wanted to start, so.
Yep. So resident rate, $8, non-resident rate, $11. Do I hear a second?
Go ahead, city manager.
Can we clarify that the group rate is also the non-resident rate? There's a group rate also included?
A charter tour bus rate?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what did I say, group rate? Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see that page.
That is currently at non-resident rate.
We just want you to confirm that rate as the same as your non-resident rate.
Okay, do you want to add that in? Do we have a second?
No.
Okay.
So I'll restate. Make a motion to continue ordinance number 2023-16 with the following changes to the fees for a resident to be $8 for the daily rate, and non-residents $11 for the daily rate, and the school schedule, the field trips to be, the school educational field trip is, we're not changing.
We're not proposing changing that. It's the tour group, the charter tour buses rate.
Charter tour bus rate to be $11 per person.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second. I got no issues with the extra dollar.
Okay. Recording secretary, would you like to read that motion back to us, please? Motion maker was Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Emrich.
To continue ordinance number 2023-16 to second reading on April 25th, 2023 with the following changes, for the daily rate for residents of $8 and the daily rate of non-residents to $11, and the charter tour bus rate to $11 per person.
Perfect, great. If there's nothing more to that, let's vote. And that motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Moving right along to ordinance number 2023. City clerk, would you read this by title only?
Ordinance number 2023-03, an ordinance of the city of Northport adopting the city commission policy number 2023-01 related to the inventory disposal and acquisition of real property, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, city clerk. City manager, this is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So based on the second reading on January 24th, 2023, there were following changes made to the commission policy in reference to the city manager, inventory disposal and acquisition of real property, clarification that any closing costs or fees are not the responsibility of the city, and also the annual review of surplus parcels, timelines added to the city policy. At the January 24th meeting, which occurred as presented on the third, to the third reading, the following changes were made, three changes, removing that in the absence of direction the sales proceeds will be allocated to the city's general fund or to the applicable special district or enterprise fund based on the governmental entity selling the property. In added language to section 3 land exchange program to state that the city will not be responsible for any costs associated with the transaction. And one more modification was to subsection E1 to identify when an independent written appraisal is not required and when an informal in-house analysis will be used to determine property value. We are happy to answer any questions, especially with our Assistant Director of Public Works, Ms. Tricia Wisner, here available.
Thank you for that, city manager. I'm opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell, go ahead.
Yeah, for the acquisition of real property, closing costs is not mentioned in here. And I know that commission was pretty adamant about not having the city paying closing costs. So we have no closing costs for land exchange, no closing costs for purchasing property, but not anything about acquiring property.
I believe that was in a separate section.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, and I just couldn't find it. So that's why I just thought I would bring it up again. Hopefully you would be able to point me to it.
I know we put it in a few sections to keep it the same throughout, proceeds. One second, we'll make sure that that is in there.
Closing costs for acquiring property. Disposition, it says city's not going to pay. Exchange, the city's not going to pay, but not for acquiring.
And that is the goal, is that we would not be paying the closing costs.
So maybe we could just add it in. I don't think it'd be that difficult. I know we're at third reading and I definitely don't want this to come back, but at the same time.
Well, I think we need to discuss that. I do see a bit of difference when it's a property that we want to acquire than the others, but I would be very interested in what my fellow commissioners have to say. I also don't want to bring it back for fourth reading, but I also want to get it right.
Exactly.
And we are aware that obviously if the closing cost is not directly billed to the city, it will probably be a portion of the evaluation of the value of the parcel. So, but, but you're right, it should state in here that it was not going to have closing costs directly paid on behalf of the seller. Can we say that?
Seller or the
I'm sorry, the purchaser.
The purchaser.
Either, either actually, because there's closing costs on both sides.
Of course. I don't, I don't want the city to be paying their closing costs. Maybe it could be each party is responsible for their closing costs.
Before you speak, Mr. Speak, let me just throw out that I'd also like to have a sense from staff how much of an impediment would be shifting 100% of the closing costs to the seller, what kind of impact that would have on our ability to acquire property.
Thank you, Mayor. Chuck speak, public works director. That's exactly what I was going to bring up. The closing costs are a negotiation tool when you're trying to purchase land. If you tie our hands and say that we can't pay any closing costs, I can pretty much guarantee you then the closing costs are going to be incorporated to the parcel price, the price of the property. So I think that, that really, that's something that you use to negotiate in a real estate sale. I would prefer that that was kind of left for us to do, and then, of course, you will see that before purchases made.
Questions, comments from my fellow commissioners?
I have a follow.
I agree with staff, absolutely, use it as a tool, you know?
Thank you, Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was not forgotten about when I saw all the other ones in there. The only other thing is that last consensus that we asked for when a independent written appraisal is not required, and that an informal in-house analysis was going to be done, I'm not seeing in-house in this. And I've read it over, and I think it will be required, an in-house appraisal prior to consideration for purchase.
It would be a market value analysis that staff would do as a starting point for the negotiation, so it's just kind of inherent to the process of a real estate transaction sale.
Okay.
So if we're not going to get a formal appraisal, we will need to come up with a value of what this is. So absent of a formal appraisal, we'll be completing that process to determine what the value should be.
But when I'm, when I'm reading it, I'm seeing the city is exempt from obtaining an independent written appraisal for donated parcels and for unimproved parcels that are less than two acres in size and not on waterfront or canal. All other parcels will require an appraisal prior to consideration for purchase. So where is it saying that we're going to do this in-house type of analysis so that the commission has something to go by that says this property is valued at X based on our in-house appraisal?
It would be like an inherent step in determining the value of a parcel. So, you know, typically policies don't go to the lowest level of all the steps that staff, staff take. So we wouldn't be requiring a cost on appraisal, but we have a real estate coordinator who has certifications that would be utilizing her skills and certifications to value the parcel and have that discussion, discussion with the purchaser or seller. And it's a negotiation standpoint that goes off of, it's a standard practice to go off of market value.
So she would be doing a market appraisal like any Realtor would do?
Yes.
Gotcha. Just wanted clarity on what was decided for that third consensus.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any lights on, and again, I'm itching for a motion, but first, city clerk, do we have any online or in-house public comment on this item? And I am closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 2023-03 as presented.
Second.
Yes!
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner Emrich to continue, to approve.
Thank you.
So used to continuing. To approve and adopt ordinance number 2023-03. There's nothing more to that?
Oh, I, I just, I just have to say, we get to cross off one more thing off of our to-do list. Yay, thank you.
I'll tell you, we are the closing things off commission. And that motion passes 5 to 0. On to resolutions. Resolution number 2023-R-10. City clerk, could you read this item by title only?
Resolution number 2023-R-10, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Northport, Florida, amending city commission policy number 2021-03 related to the rules of order and rules of decorum for boards, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
And city clerk, I know for a fact this is indeed your item, and it's not a code for city manager, so please introduce it.
On November 8th, the city commission provided a direction for the city attorney and city clerk to work on a process for workshops, consensus, and motions as a commission of policy. As well as on February 14th, 2023, the commission adopted ordinance number 2023-07 related to advisory boards and committees. Rules and decorum and rules of order for advisory boards were repealed from the city code at that time and have been placed in this policy to be consistent with the city commission.
Thank you for that, city clerk. I'm, oop, I'm opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah. Not too sure where to begin on this because 2023-07 was repealed and replaced with new language. And in that new language, there's all of these things that this policy is requesting to be done. If you look at 2023-07, it says, an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 4, Article 1. And a lot of these things in that ordinance that we approved in February is being captured again in this policy. And I'm curious why? It's like duplicated.
Give me one second to pull up that ordinance.
I have it if you'd like. Because when I was going over this, I'm like, this is like deja vu. We've done this before. And I think part of it is because they were being worked on at like the same time, that maybe that's
What's, what section are you looking at in particular?
Ordinance number 2023-07. Section 4.2 talks about board construction, and it talks about presiding officers. There's decorum that's mentioned in a totally different section of section 4, I think it's 4-5. I, I just think before we start going through this, that maybe we just table it for the next meeting. Maybe you and I could have a quick little sit-down? I don't, I don't know.
So what you just gave me, so 4-2, for construction, has nothing to do, the presiding officer, this is the policy for the presiding officer to follow, is what we have here. The board, the presiding officer in section 4.2 is to tell the boards that they have to have a presiding officer. They have to, they have to serve as a presiding officer, the chairperson. It's just, the presiding officer in the code, in the ordinance, is very vague. It does not include all of this. This is pretty much, the code says, you have to have a chair, you have to vote on a chair each year, and this is the chair's purpose. This policy gives more detail into what the chair does, what the presiding officer does, the mayor, you know? So it's more detail in the policy than it is in the code. So we don't want to remove it from the code because the code's telling them they have to elect the chair, vice chair, mayor, vice mayor.
According to the code, it says presiding officer, the chairperson serves as a presiding officer in the chair's absence, and the vice chair takes over. It's the exact same thing that's
So the, the policy is saying the chair and the presiding officer is responsible for enforcing the rules of order and rules of decorum, which are provided in the policy. So it's giving that little overview, this is why this policy is here. You have the chair, you have the mayor, this is what their job is.
Okay.
Where the code is saying you need to elect one of those each year, and then this is what they're going to do vaguely, not all the detail.
So it's more precise, more detailed?
Yes.
I'll give you that, but it says here the mayor or the chair will serve as a presiding order officer at all board meetings, and then you have the little sub-script or whatever, that one and two, and it says to see the city charter. The city charter only applies
The one and two is the, is the code here.
One and two, the little...
Okay, I see what you're talking about down there.
It says, mentioned in the charter, but the mayor is only mentioned in the charter, not the chair.
The chair's not going to be mentioned in the charter.
Of course not.
So the one and the two here is the vice mayor or the vice chair. So it is showing that it's the vice mayor. That part is in the charter. The two in the absence of vote, which is referring to the mayor, which is in the charter, not the, it's just little detail. But no, the advisory boards are not in the charter.
So maybe the sub-script needs to be moved over to the mayor, one, and vice mayor, two, instead of at the end of the sentence. And if you go to section B, where it says, absence, a board member who is unable to attend a board meeting must notify the recording secretary, who will provide notification to the presiding officer. I thought our policy was, we had to advise you, the city clerk, because we don't know who the, who the recording secretary is, and that we can't give the recording secretary direction to advise the mayor. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, so this, this is more written towards the advisory board.
Exactly.
So we could add a blurb and air for it to, for city commission to notify the city clerk.
Yeah, that would be great.
City clerk, do we need a consensus on that?
Yes. Okay, well, I'm, I'm just going through my points, if you don't mind. I don't see any other lights on. And then I'll, we'll grab consensuses if you want, or we could take them one at a time.
Knock them out as we hit them.
Well, then I'll start with, mayor, can I get a consensus to have the little sub-script, I think is what it's called, the one and two, to be placed after mayor and vice mayor?
And let's do it by voice vote?
Yes.
A yes.
I'm a yes, vice mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Emrich?
Yes.
All right. The next one is to, I'll get a consensus to add a blurb under section B, absence, to reflect the city commission's notification of the city clerk. If a commissioner is absent, and the city clerk to notify the mayor of that absence or language.
To that effect.
To that effect, thank you.
Who's taking this? I'd like to hear it repeated. Is it city clerk or recording secretary?
Sorry, I wasn't sure if that's what you were asking for.
Yeah.
To add a blurb under section B, absence, to reflect the city commission notification of the city clerk if a commissioner is absent, and the clerk to notify the mayor of that absence.
That sum it up, Commissioner?
Summs it up. I'm sure they'll come up with the appropriate language.
Let's have a vote.
And I'm a yes.
I'm a yes, vice mayor.
Yes.
We have a consensus.
The, the consensus, and I think this one's more of a discussion, consensus workshops. If a consensus is not obtained, I'm curious, what happens then? How does staff know how to proceed? It, it, it just, to obtain consent in a direction provided to staff or show agreement, if it's not achieved, what happens?
So I think what our practice has been around consensuses that are not unanimous, meaning we have no consensus, is I will typically ask staff, if based on the conversation, they have enough direction. If it's not clear, then my practice has been asking for a vote, even if I know it's not going to be unanimous, as a tool to give staff information on how we're falling. So that's what we've been doing. So what are you going for?
Can't give motions. And if you don't have consensus, then, in my opinion, the city manager doesn't have direction on how to proceed.
City manager?
Yeah.
What, what do you, we want you to opine.
And what is the question regarding our...
So if, if we are in a workshop and we call for a consensus and don't have it, how, with, I've been operating, how we've been operating is to ask you and staff, do you have enough direction based on conversation? Or do you need us to vote on a consensus, even though we may not have it?
Oh. Do you want answers in the third?
Go ahead, do you have an answer?
Well, I have an answer, and then you probably have a better answer. My answer is, based on the conversation that we hear in the workshop, we're normally getting the information that we need, and we can hear from you, and we take that direction. And normally, that means coming back with a, a version of the conversation so that then you can have choices to make a decision on. Normally, unless it's very time-consuming, we, we would bring you back options that would fulfill the conversation. Because again, someone could have a feeling in the conversation, and then they change their mind, whether it actually gets to them as a voting item or not. We try not to rule anything out specifically unless it's just time or labor inclusive, which is not on most items that we ask you for guidance.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. And city clerk?
That's what I was going to say. Okay.
All right, I just, I, I sought clarity on that. Thank you. The last one that I have, I think, no, I have a different one. Under section 8A2, it says, if this is for boards, no later than the second regular meeting after the action took place, a board member may submit for reconsideration. I'm sorry, but some of these advisory boards don't meet regularly. And to put their, their ability to have reconsideration for advisory boards, you might be having a reconsideration of a vote from like six months ago.
This actually, and that, that would be perfect with that. This is actually just out of parliamentarian procedure. This is Robert's Rule of Order. So that's written exactly how it is in Robert's Rule of Order.
If this is supposed to apply to boards and the commissions, I think that reconsideration for commission votes only, something to, because advisory boards, if they're going to reconsider it, I don't think one that ever happens.
It does not. It has not.
Yeah, and, and I don't think it's even practical for reconsideration months afterwards. So I'm, I'm just looking to have reconsideration, commission vote reconsideration or something like that, so that we then advise, it doesn't apply to advisory boards.
City clerk?
Yes.
What's your preference? Would you rather have reconsideration in to cover the potentiality of it happening? The fact that it hasn't happened doesn't necessarily mean it won't happen. What's your advice?
I would say the boards that do meet, I would leave it in there to cover it, because the boards that do meet more frequently, they may have, may, some point have that situation come up to where they, they meet twice a month, you know? Or maybe they'll call a special meeting just so that they can discuss something. It's rare, may never happen, but it doesn't hurt to leave it in there if it doesn't typically apply anyway.
All right.
All right. One more. Yes, one more. Rules of decorum D. Rules of decorum for board members is in the city code 4.5 for advisory boards. And it's quite different than this one.
Okay, give me one second.
We never visited 4.5 when we were redoing the advisory board stuff.
Section 4.5 or 4-5 is now recording secretary in that updated.
Oh, that's right, because the whole code...
The whole code was changed.
Yeah, so I might have a wrong code number, but rules of decorum is covered somewhere else in muni code. You're right, that, that all changed.
I just thought we removed it, but let me...
I'll concede.
Let me know when you're all set, city clerk.
I'm all set. I don't see it in the new, in the new section four at all. I don't see rules of decorum in there. Yeah.
Okay. I'm not seeing any lights on. Do we have any public comment on this item online?
We do not.
In-house?
We do not.
And I'm itching for a motion.
Make a motion, mayor.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-R-10 as presented with the two consensuses that were obtained.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution number 2023-R-10 as presented with the two consensuses made at this meeting. Motion maker was Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Emrich. Is there anything to it? And let's vote, please. And that motion passes five to zero. Moving on to resolution number 2023-R-23. City clerk, would you read this by title only?
Resolution number 2023-R-23, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending City Commission Policy Number 2021-04 related to City Commission minutes and records, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, city clerk. This is your item?
Yes. On February 14th, 2023, a motion was made to direct the city clerk to bring back policy number 2021-04 for discussion and possible action to reflect support or opposition in the meeting minutes for all future public comments. The attached policy incorporates that.
Thank you, city clerk. Opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, in light of yesterday's gen, workshop, I've, I heard citizen X does not wish to speak but is in opposition of the agenda discussion, whatever it was that it says. How is that going to be captured in the minutes?
We're going to annotate the, the individual's name. If they, they print, they say their name, we're going to introduce that, and we're just going to, it'll be the recording secretary or the city clerk, whoever's sitting over here, read the below public comments into the record of those supporting or opposing item, blah, 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 and it will list them individually.
Do we need to put that in this code now?
No, that's covered in the, the public comment one.
Okay, but this is for minutes?
This is for, this is for minutes. No, it's still going to reflect, if a public commenter identifies their support or opposition to any agenda item, the minutes will reflect the commenter's position. That's that number five.
Okay, regardless if it's spoken position or if it's opposition. Okay, thank you for that clarity.
I'm not seeing any other lights on, so let's move on. City clerk, do we have any online or in-house public comments on this item?
We do not.
Then I am requesting a motion.
I'll make it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I move to adopt resolution number 2023-R-23 as presented.
Do I have a second? I have a motion made by Commissioner Stokes, seconded by Commissioner Emrich, to adopt resolution number 2023-R-23 as presented. Let's vote. And that motion carries five to zero. On to resolution number 2023-R-27. City clerk, read by title only, please.
Resolution number 2023-R-27, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending City Commission Policy Number 2020-04 related to the procedures and methods for public comment in City Commission meetings and workshops, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, city clerk. This is your item?
Yes. On October 13th, 2020, the City Commission adopted resolution number 2020-R-30 and City Commission Policy Number 2020-04. On March 6th, 2023, the commission provided consensus to direct the city clerk to bring back a policy to include public comment process on agenda items, as well as to bring back suggestions for a process to handle public comment cards more efficiently without creating distractions.
Thank you. I am opening up the floor to commissioner questions. If I can get my screen to change. Commissioner McDowell?
All right, so based on what I've been noticing in today's meeting and yesterday's workshop, it is, if you look at section D, the public support on agenda items, when a person is recognized to give public comment, the presiding officer will announce support or opposition. Yesterday, it was the city clerk that gave that announcement. I think that needs to be amended, or is it going to be the mayor or presiding officer giving that?
Maybe we could add the presiding officer or city clerk, only because we're trying different things right now to see how the handling of the public comment card works better.
Works, yeah. Or maybe designate.
Well, if it's a designate, then you have to designate who's going to do it every single meeting by having it be the mayor, presiding officer, or city clerk. That way, then, it's a given as to, it's going to be one of you two.
What if it's assistant city clerk in the chair?
We'll say city clerk staff.
Okay. All right. The other thing is questions. On number two, all questions from the public to the city commission will be addressed through the mayor. The mayor will handle the questions in the manner the mayor sees fit. All well and good, usually the mayor handles that perfectly fine, but then there's some times where the mayor may not want to address it, or another commissioner may say, hey, mayor, could I please have city manager approach, staff get with that? So I don't think it should solely be the mayor. I think it should be the discretion of the mayor or a commissioner. So I think it's the will of the board at that one.
Yeah, I think that's up to the will of the board. At the end of the day, even if a commissioner were to address it and say, mayor, can we get, it's still a, the end result is the mayor's going to request the city manager do it based off of the commissioner's request, but however young, when it worded, if we can...
I would just throw out that to keep the meeting orderly, that perhaps, finance is here to discuss this with us.
Big guns are here.
The meeting orderly, if a commission wants to give that direction, ask the mayor, and then the mayor can give that direction just to keep things orderly. But I just saw Commissioner Stokes...
I was just going to say exactly what you just said.
You have to stop reading my mind.
It should be the mayor.
Because that's exactly what I was going to say.
Yeah, but there's no reason to go through the mayor to do that. Yeah, just go through the mayor, that's all.
But it's not captured that a commissioner can make that request. It's, I'm not seeing that in the written language.
City clerk, do you feel we need it?
It's a matter of preference for the board.
I don't think so. I think that's regular working on the board. We ask you questions as we go through different things. I don't think it's any different.
City clerk, do you want a consensus? We can do it if you want it.
If Commissioner McDowell would like a consensus to change it, then...
I'm just trying to think of how to word it to include a commissioner can ask the mayor to have this addressed.
Can't we always do that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
It is sort of how it's working now, sort of.
Well, the first time you, you, you ignore my request, I'll be bringing this back to have it changed. How's that sound, mayor?
Commissioner, I don't think I ever ignore your request. Do we have any public comment? I'm not seeing any other lights on, on this topic.
We do not.
Oh, I got one more on the public comment card.
One more. Okay, Commissioner.
Okay. Um, so the public comment card. Hang on, hang on. Um, on the back, because we addressed a couple of the things that I had on the card, on the back, um, it says, "Rules of decorum, except for members of the Commission and City staff, no person shall be allowed to approach the Commission dais without the consent of the Presiding Officer." It has always been the practice that the Northport Police Officer keeps everybody away when we're in meetings and on breaks. So maybe, is it supposed to say the Northport Police Officer as opposed to the Presiding Officer? Because he's in charge of the security.
In charge of the security, but he's not in charge of saying who can approach the dais. He would still have to get permission from the Presiding Officer for somebody to, for him to even give that authority to say that approach.
Just making sure.
I don't, I hope I don't have to clear the room. That would not be something I would want to do, or clear the dais.
Good. That's all I had on that part, because the other items were addressed. Thank you, Mayor.
Public comment? City Clerk, public comment?
There is none.
Online or here? Okay, I am closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-R-27 as presented.
Do I hear a second? I have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner Emmerich to adopt Resolution 2023-R-27 as presented.
Can I interject?
Please.
It's not as presented. We're going to amend Section A.D.
Oh, two of the footnotes. Silly me.
Okay.
Getting late in the day, aren't we?
It is. It is.
Who is my second?
So we have a seconder. Do you want to give it up or do an amendment? How do you want to?
I'll make an amendment.
Your second?
Yeah, I'll call my second.
I'll restate the motion. Sorry, I, I missed that one. Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-R-27 with the consensus given in Section 1D.
There was no consensus giving.
There's a consensus.
On the footnote?
Yeah, it was.
That's the wrong, that's the wrong policy.
That was the other one.
There was no consensus for, to add to City Clerk. It was just discussion.
Yeah, it was just.
But you can just say to, um, adopt the resolution as amended to include City Clerk staff in Section A.D.
That's what you said. Thank you, City Clerk. I thought we got a consensus on that. Boy, God, we need a break.
Are we squared away now?
I hope so.
I think we are.
Seconded again, then.
Okay, we have the motion maker, Commissioner McDowell. We have a second, Commissioner Emmerich. Commissioner McDowell, have you voted?
Oh.
And that motion carries five to zero. I was going to do one more before we took a break, but I think we need a break now.
Okay.
That's right. So, uh, 10 minutes. We'll come back in 1:46. Thank you. 1:46. We are restarting this meeting one minute late. My apologies. The same crew is up here. We are missing by smear. I'm sure she'll be back in just a minute, and I'll acknowledge her when she arrives. Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 2023-R-26. City Clerk, title only, please.
Resolution Number 2023-R-26, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget and capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 relating to Hurricane Ian utilities purchases, increase to utilities building project U-18UAB, utilities lift station project, an additional assistant city attorney, a mobile lift system, and maintenance costs for fleet, six John Deere mowers for road and drainage, cranberry and Toledo blade improvement project, R-23CTI, I-75 interchange at Toledo Blade Project, R-22175, I-75 interchange at Sumter Project, R-22755, or 5S, I'm sorry, price widening Phase 2 project, R-25PW2, and Yorkshire rain tree interchange project, R-23YRI in the amount of $16,210,747, providing for findings, providing for posting, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. That was a multiple. Uh, City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, and yes, that was a lot, and it is, this is a pretty big interdepartmental budget amendment that we're asking for. Based on the detailed description in the item, I just want to read some of the financial impacts from what we're asking for here. Uh, the general fund balance would be reduced by $56,000. The transportation impact fee fund balance would be reduced by $9.8 million. The road and drainage, um, R&amp;R fund balance would be reduced by $61,000. Utilities fund balance will be reduced by $5.1 million. Water capacity fee fund balance would be reduced by $1 million, and the fleet management fund balance would be reduced by $86,000. Um, there is also one change that our finance team would like to make you aware of, but I'll turn it over for, uh, our Director Kimberly Williams of our Finance Department to provide that update and answer any questions you might have.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Uh, so there will be one change to those financial impacts that, uh, City Manager read, and that would be to the Utilities Fund. Rather than the $5.1 million impact, it will be a 1.5. So it'd be 1,500, I'm sorry, I wrote it down wrong. I'm sorry, and the water capacity fee fund would be a zero impact. So the change that was requested from Utilities was to remove the pieces of their request related to their, the utility building, and what they want to do is bring that back to you as a part of the '24 CIP budget request. So what they were asking to remove would be the entire portion for the Water Capacity Fee Fund, 423, so that $1 million is not being requested. And then under, one of, under the Utilities Fund 420, the line that says additional for utility building, they're no longer asking for that 3.5 million.
So, Ms. Williams, could you restate the total amount of this budget adjustment?
Bottom line. Maybe I can just go to my questions while they're doing that math, because it might change based on my questions.
Okay, I'm opening up the floor to Commissioner questions. Go ahead, Commissioner McDowell.
All right. So the first one I have, and maybe I just need a little clarity on this, is the Cranberry-Toledo Blade Project for the $383,000, give or take dollars. It's my understanding we're supposed to have a 50-50 agreement. Why are we budgeting money and we don't have an agreement? Can't we wait until either one, the agreement, or two, budget time? Because obviously, nothing's going to happen in the near future.
Mr. Speaks, you may speak.
Yes, ma'am. Public Works Director. Those funds are coming out of transportation impact fees. We're just putting them there now to move them into that position. Uh, if that agreement never takes place, those funds will be pulled back out to another transportation project. Again, those funds are very limited as to where we can use them. They also have a timeline on how long we can keep them without applying them to a project.
All right. So with that said, if we are applying money to a project that technically does not exist because the Commission has not approved a CIP project, wouldn't it make sense to approve the CIP project today and the funding? That way then you can create the CIP project for second reading? So we have a CIP project and funding, because right now, it's kind of like putting a cart before the horse?
Right, so the CIPs will be adjusted, they're coming back in the '24 budget, correct?
That's what I'm getting at.
Right.
This is a budget amendment to the CIP. By approving this, you are approving this project.
Okay, because in my questions, and this is what prompted it, they said that the CIP sheet will come back during budget type cycle for discussion, and that didn't make sense. So if we're going to put the money in, we're also creating the CIP. Correct?
Yes. By approving this, you're approving the project.
All right. So, so it's not going to come back for CIP project approval at budget time?
It will, it will come back to you as part of our CIP, our, our list of CIP projects. The only time it'll come back for further approval is if we need to add funds to that project.
Okay, so for second reading, we'll have a, a CIP sheet?
There's no second reading.
Oh, that's right. This is, this is a change in budget process. So after today, we will have a created CIP sheet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. It wasn't very clear in the responses, so thank you for that. Similar thing is for Yorkshire. We're supposed to be working with Charlotte. For Yorkshire and Rain Tree interchanges?
We are, we are continually working with our partners on that, as well as FDOT, but we are far away from any interlocal agreements or any, uh, cost sharing.
So, part of the reason for this is to allocate funding from impact fees, so that way then we have a designated project before the expiration date?
Correct. As well as providing that project, getting it on the books, it allows us to apply for grants, ensure that we have a stake in the game.
Thank you for all of that.
And we do have the new total for the amendment, if you're ready for that at this time.
Yes, please.
It's $11,593,967.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Repeat, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Correct.
That's all the questions I have, Mayor. If you want, I can, no other discussion, I'll make a motion.
And after we do public comment, City Clerk, online? In-house? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-R-26, removing $3,526,000, $3,526,780 from the Utilities Fund for the Utility Building Project U-18UAB, and removing the water capacity fee of $1 million for the same utility project, leaving a budget amendment total of $11,593,967.
Recording Secretary, would you repeat that, please?
To adopt Resolution Number 2023-R-26, removing $3,526,780 from the Utilities Fund for the Utility Building Project U-18UAB, and removing the water capacity fee of $1 million for the same utility project, leaving a budget total of $11,593,967.
Well done. Motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Emmerich. Anything to it? If not, let's vote.
Mayor, if I may, I think Mr. Powell took shorthand in his previous life.
Please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. My little iPad up here is frozen. If IT or City Clerk might look at that, I'd appreciate it. Um, on to general business, Item 23-0471. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this item is discussion and possible action regarding the lease agreement between the City of Northport and the Jockey Club of Northport Property Owners Association. There's a lot of history here with this conversation, but I'll start in the summer of 2021, where staff was given direction by the Commission to evaluate the expansion of the K-9 Club Dog Park, using a piece of the parcel. In December of 2021, the Park and Recs Department staff attended a Jockey Club Board of Directors meeting and presented information on the proposed expansion of the K-9 Club Dog Park. In February of 2022, the Jockey Club responded with a letter stating that they were not in support of the expansion of the club, um, which subsequently followed by, um, a letter dated on February 18, along with requests for the City to conduct a review of its records related to the lease agreement and to enter into negotiations for an amended lease agreement to include financial compensation from the City to the Jockey Club. In September of 2022, during the discussion, um, staff shared that based on preliminary legal review, it was recommended that the lease agreement be rewritten and amended. We're trying now currently to get the lease rewritten and amended without the implication of financial compensation to the Jockey Club. So after review of the lease agreement and associated records by staff and attorney, it is recommended that the lease agreement with the Jockey Club of Northport Property Owners Association be amended and restated to clarify, to clearly outline the existing rights for both the City and the Jockey Club. We're happy to answer any questions as we receive direction.
Okay, I'm opening up the floor to Commissioner questions. I saw some hands going, Commissioner Stokes. I think you're trying to press your button.
Yeah. Um, so I guess what we're looking at here is really just giving direction or, or to get the parties together to talk and.
No, that's what we're doing now, but we're at the point where we don't believe financial compensation for the park is necessary, and what's being requested, there's about six or seven things, or maybe eight, that are being requested, but two of them have financial implications. One is paying them $3,000 a month. Another one is paying for insurance related to the property that I'm sure that they are going to speak on, um, as they have their comment period as well. But we want to amend it without financial compensation.
Shall I come back to you?
Please.
Commissioner Emmerich?
Yeah, you had talked about the, um, monitaries and the insurance, but aren't, aren't we self-insured on, on that property for the, uh, Dog Pound or whatever it is, the?
Dog Park, yeah. I don't think we currently pay insurance on the Dog Park. I believe, am I correct, Director?
Parks and Recreation Director Sandy Funheller, my understanding is that it's a facility that's included, um, as part of the overall, it's self-insured.
Then yes. So that.
So we're already covered for insurance on any incident, and that would fall on our responsibility regardless.
Correct. But though, it's one of the two financial implications within the agreement. But yes, if we're already paying for it, sorry, Director, if we're already paying for that, then yes, we are covering that right now.
Right. So we would have no need going forward to reimburse them for insurance or liabilities, because they're not liable. We are.
Correct. The ask was for, for the insurance to be taken care of by the City.
Okay, and we're already doing that.
Then, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Commissioner McDowell?
I'm curious. They made a request or an ask to have us pay $3,000 a month, if I remember correctly, some dollar amount a month.
$3,000.
What, what was the purpose of that?
So according to the addendum in the agreement, it says that the Northport would agree to pay a sum amount of $3,000 a month for the K-9 Club payable. Uh, this amount shall be indexed with inflation. Adjustment applied to March 1st.
Okay, but did they give any indication as to what would be the? Okay, but did they give any indication as to what would be the purpose of us paying them for our city-owned property?
I would defer and let them answer that question better to give you an answer.
All right, yeah, because it's... Thank you. I couldn't agree with that, but...
Any other questions or comments by Commissioners? I just have one, I want to make sure I'm understanding the flow here. So the city has leased the property to the Jockey Club for free, a dollar a year.
Dollar a year.
We, is the city leasing?
No, city owns.
The city-owned property?
Yeah, it's ours.
And we're leasing it to the Jockey Club for a dollar a year?
Mm-hmm.
And now the ask is that we pay a lease fee on that amount, and the city no longer wants to expand the Dog Park. I'm just trying to make sure I've got the facts.
Correct, this is just for the property as it currently sits in the agreement as it is right now.
Okay. Boy, I need to hear more about this.
Absolutely.
So if there are no other questions, I guess we're going to hear more about this through public comment. Do I have that?
Yes, we do.
Correct? Well then, let's swing right into that.
David Casaros? My name is David Casaros, I am the Vice President of the Jockey Club of Northport Property Owners Association. I wanted to address the Commission today regarding the agenda item that you just briefly touched on. Based on the discussions you've mentioned thus far, understanding that you want to rewrite the lease, the other factor involved is the Jockey Club itself, and currently at this time, we're not interested in rewriting the lease. So what I would like to do is focus upon the general discussion and the documents that you have in front of you, which I assume you've already read, and I want to touch on three points, okay? The first point is we do want to reconcile the inclusion of the K-9 Club within the lease agreement. Now, K-9 Club was constructed in 2010 without, in violation of the 1981 lease agreement. I ask that you read the 1981 lease agreement prior to making any speculations or comments with respect to various responsibilities between the city and the Jockey Club. Now, we know that there's no record of agreement between the city and the Jockey Club regarding the construction, the operation, and maintenance of the K-9 Club as it currently stands right now, okay? Although the statute of limitations precludes us from taking any action regarding incidents which occurred back in 2010, the lease agreement still gives the Jockey Club, and I quote from Paragraph 17, "the sole discretion and control as to the activities and uses conducted on or about it," unquote. So that's a significant clause within that document, that inclusive of Paragraph 16 and 17 of the lease agreement. Now, our proposals to amend the lease are found in our letter to you of 16 January 2023. It's our hope that you review the letter with a view to rectifying the 2010 lease, violation of the 2010 lease agreement, and in doing so, enable yourselves and us to basically move ahead with the Jockey Club, sorry, the K-9 Club currently in the location on the leased properties. The second issue deals with liability insurance. I know you've touched on it, saying that you've got liability insurance. Nevertheless, as a signatory of the lease with the City of Northport, we consider us to be the second viable target in a lawsuit that was, that arose out of an incident at the K-9 Club itself. I believe you have sovereign immunity to a certain amount.
Sir, you are out of time. You're allowed three minutes for public comment.
Thank you.
Deputy City Attorney, do you have a view to share with us regarding that lease agreement?
No matter, Mayor, however the board wants to provide direction, we can work with the HOA to amend that contract, City Manager's Office, however you decide to direct us or not.
Thank you. I'm going to reopen Commissioner questions. I don't know if that public comment might have triggered some other inquiries.
That the only public comment?
Is that the only public comment?
Yes, yeah, I thought I heard that, yeah. Commissioner Emmerich? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the question I had was, you are already working on this in the legal department on looking at this lease agreement and possible amendments to it, correct? So wouldn't you be working on that lease agreement, then bringing it back to the Commission for us to go over in the future?
Yes, but I believe we're in an impasse of what would be included in that agreement.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm trying to get at, where...
That's a huge part.
I believe he stated that they were not interested in amending the agreement, and we said we do want to amend it to make it more accurate to its current state of what their rights are versus our rights. We just don't believe there should be any financial compensation in there for the monthly fee. And hearing it from me as we're negotiating is one thing, hearing it from you, who directed us to engage them in the first place, is what we're looking for today.
Right, so my follow-up question on this is, is if they don't want to amend the lease, and they're not willing to amend the lease, that could just go to status quo and there's no financial impact as well? Am I correct on that? It would revert back to the original lease agreement of a dollar a year?
It would just remain in place?
That's correct, it remains in place.
Right, until something else.
We, our office does have certain, some concerns that we've spoken to you about of that lease, but nothing would change, that's correct. And we would be in the same situation going forward, should they have any other claims or issues with the lease.
My opinion on this would be to have you keep continuing with your talks and let it fall where it may. I mean, I'm not in favor of any, of authorizing any type of financial impact at this time, not without seeing the lease come back and seeing what the provisions are, to be honest with you. That's all I got, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stokes?
Yeah, I guess I'll start with the easier side, which is, you know, the issue of liability. It would seem as if your ongoing discussions might be able to address that in some fashion. If they were amenable to renegotiate the lease, then perhaps there could be some indemnification in there to help provide some protection, since we're self-insured, that would give them some additional comfort. I do scratch my head, I can't quite wrap my head around the request for compensation here, like a payment for property we own, even though we built it. I do appreciate that there was no permission by them, but it was our, the city's property, city built it, it's used by them as well as people outside, as I understand, outside the Jockey Club as well. So I don't really get what they ask, is they don't want to renegotiate the lease, yet they'd like to get $3,000, and I just don't understand that. I didn't when we discussed it in my briefing, and I don't now. I just don't follow the logic of it, but I do understand the concern over the indemnification. That's...
I will say, and this might be out of line, I think he had more to say, and even though it was a public comment, he may have needed a little bit more latitude to kind of get to his point to help the understanding, which may help you understand your decision, he might just need a little bit more time to speak, if that's allowable.
So Commissioners, are you open to giving this gentleman a little more time to explain his position?
I would be, and I think maybe he can do it in like five more minutes, and this is highly unusual for us to extend public comment for one individual, but I think since this individual has a deeper insight, maybe he can wrap it up in five minutes or less.
Sir, how much time do you need to complete your comments?
I'll touch on the...
Come on up, come on up.
And I would actually not look at this as public comment, I would look at this as the other side and presenting their case to the Commission, so I don't look at it as public comment. That's just my opinion.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for the additional time. All right, I'll be very quick and hopefully succinct.
Thank you, City Manager.
The reasons why that we're asking for financial compensation as well as indemnification from liability is due to the fact that this K-9 Club sits on the land that is governed by the lease. The lease gives the Jockey Club and the Jockey Club sole discretion as to any and all activities that take place and go on it in perpetuity. Despite the fact that the K-9 Club was constructed in 2010, when we looked, relooked at the lease, we found no provisions with respect to time. So for example, at this point in time, the Jockey Club could decide that we no longer want the K-9 Club to be sitting on the leased properties, and may simply ask you to move it elsewhere. That is one option. So in discussion with the board and the membership, we came up with a conclusion that if we want the Jockey Club to remain on the leased lands, we first of all have to set up an agreement in place, which also would involve a property survey, a boundary survey, which doesn't exist either. So we have no agreement to construct the Jockey Club on the leased land. There is no boundary survey that delineates the area occupied by the Jockey Club. And then there's the question of indemnification. The lease ties us to the city. Although the fact that you said, you state you've got lots of money in insurance to cover it, my concern is sovereign immunity, which I believe is $200,000 for your particular city, but then we're the next target. So in discussions with the board, we came up with the provisions that you have in the letter of 16 January, which calls for indemnification through liability insurance, a clear definition of where the K-9 Club actually exists, and some financial compensation for the use of that property from here henceforth, from here on in. So those are the three main points that we are concerned with at this particular point in time. You've got to read the lease. I understand you're saying it's city-owned property, and you can deal with it as you see fit, but if you look specifically at Paragraph 16 and 17 of that lease, it says otherwise. Okay, it puts the Jockey Club in control of any and all activities that take place on those leased properties. It's odd, I admit, but that's the way it was written back in 1981 and agreed to between, I believe, as General Development Corporation and the city itself. So that's the reason why that we're coming to you with this proposal. And I'll take any questions, or that would conclude my presentation, ma'am. Thank you for your delightful time.
Thank you, sir. I'm opening up the floor to Commissioner questions, and I have a very lazy iPad up here, it's not behaving.
Sure, there's other people in line ahead of me, you sit down.
Well, hard for me to tell. Okay, Vice Mayor Wyatt? Sir, you might want to, you might want to come back up here, I'm sorry, I was fiddling with my iPad, because the questions will come to you, sir. Vice Mayor Wyatt?
Yeah, I had a question, I don't know if this gentleman can answer that. My question in my head was, what was the purpose of the lease? Jockey Club didn't have anything on it, correct? So, do you know what was the purpose of the lease for that property? What was the reasoning for, and has the Jockey Club had, had they done anything with that property? Did they use it?
No, no, ma'am, and that's a bit fishy in my own mind, like when I go back into the historical records, from what I could see, there was a, some sort of lawsuit or something going on between General Development and the City of Northport. To what extent, I don't know, but the end result was the creation of this lease agreement between the city and the Jockey Club. That's the only, that's the only information that I have that led to the creation of the lease.
Okay, but prior to the Dog Park, the Jockey Club wasn't using it for anything?
No.
Okay. And then the $3,000 amount, that would be per month, is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be based on what? How did you come up with that figure?
Based on the fact that we just basically sat down with the board, we came up with that figure as a point of negotiation, to be honest with you. And the fact that there's the Jockey, sorry, the K-9 Club is used quite frequently, so we figured that this would be an opportunity for us to earn some income through the location of the K-9 Club, its current location.
Okay, I'll end it there. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, okay. City Manager or City Attorney, can you give me an idea of how much land this lease covers? Because I know there's a large swatch of land, and I, the, Mr. David said that there's no survey. So is it just the Jockey Club land that is in the lease, or is it all the way up to Woods Avenue and then a little bit further north of Woods Avenue? Because there's a large vacant parcel, so I'm trying to kind of gauge how big this parcel is that they're paying a dollar a year for, that we maintain, correct?
Yeah, I think we maintain, I think we maintain it when we want to use it, if I'm not mistaken from the Director, but there was a survey, not the one that hit all the marks that he is referring to, that we do have. I'm looking to see, and I don't know if it was included in your backup documentation.
I see Assistant City Manager coming forward.
Yes, so we do have the as-built survey, but I don't think it was in the backup, I'm looking here now.
I'm checking in the agreement.
At the end of the lease agreement, the exhibits there, there's an addendum one, Exhibit 1 and 2, it describes the, gives you the legal description of the properties that are covered by this lease. We have all of Track K and Track L.
I was looking for a map.
Yeah, I can't give you the map, but I have the legal descriptions, that would probably not be very helpful.
Okay, so for a dollar a month, it is that large swatch of land?
Dollar a year, ma'am.
I'm sorry, dollar a year, I apologize. Okay, so who maintains that land now?
We're going to get him to put his map down so the camera can zoom in on it so you all can see it.
And maybe Chuck, City Manager, maybe somebody could answer definitively who is responsible for cutting the grass on that vacant land?
Yes, ma'am.
So Parks and Recreation maintains the K-9 Club inside the fences and the parking lot. If we request permission from the Jockey Club to use that land as overflow parking for an event, we would then mow that area for the event purpose only, but we are not maintaining it from Parks and Recreation outside of the K-9 Club.
Can we get the camera to see if it'll zoom down on his?
Does the city, City Manager, and I appreciate that there's a difference between Parks and Rec and city maintenance, does the city maintain the vacant land outside of what Parks and Rec maintains?
Chuck, did you hear that question?
I have, wait, see that? I see it's getting in.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Wait, it was a color map.
Yeah, I see it.
No, no, move it over to the right.
Yeah, put the map over on top of the...
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. So could someone fill me in as to who maintains the vacant parcels that need to be maintained? Is that Parks and Rec? I mean, Parks and Rec only does the jockey club. I'm talking about the rest of it.
Yeah, I would have to confirm that. My gut tells me that we mow it as we do the neighborhoods, but I don't want to say that and not have that confirmed. If you give me just a minute, I can confirm that.
I would appreciate that because obviously we would maintain that drainage ditch area.
Yes, we maintain the...
Okay, so that drainage is maintained. So if you could get confirmation as to who maintains the rest, because I do see our crews out there. I don't know if they're parked out there or if they're... So, thank you. My other question is, and I'm trying to think of a very... I'm going to just straight up ask. Dog park was erected 13 years ago.
Correct.
And now it seems like you're upset that we are leasing, we are using that land without your permission. Your residents saw it going up. I'm sure your residents use it. Why now are you concerned about it?
Well, going back to 2004, 2005, 2007, there was a gentleman by the name of Bill Ward. I think he was in charge of Parks and Rec. He made overtures to the jockey club at that time, saying, "We want to build the canine club in its current, on the leased properties." The jockey club voted no, and that's documented in your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board minutes of November of 2004 and your city commission minutes, I believe it's in January of 2005, where it became clear that the jockey club did not want the canine club put into the leased properties. Fast forward to 2007, special meeting with the city commissioners on 11th of December of 2007, and they voted with very little or no discussion to locate the canine club on the leased properties. There was no discussion from then on in. Now, that went dormant for a number of years until Parks and Rec asked to expand the property in 2021, whereupon I raised the question to my fellow board members as to, why are they asking us permission? They should be, it's leased property, and I was under the misconception that you were, that your property, you can deal with it as you see fit. But upon reading the lease, I could see why, because paragraphs 16 and 17 are quite clear. We decide, and as we talked about, there's no conditions to this. So we can decide to leave it there, or we can decide to ask you to move it, or we can decide to seek financial compensation or the like. We're doing the latter because currently we've got a homeowners association of 612 homes. We charge an annual fee of $240 per year, and it's our intention to keep these fees as low as possible because in addition to a lot of working families, we have a lot of seniors who are original jockey club members going back to 1978, 1980, and they're hard-pressed to meet that $240 a year commitment. So what we're coming to you for and the reason behind the financial compensation is to offset our income. Yes, it's all about the money, if I can be honest with you, ma'am.
I appreciate the frank conversation.
I'm brutally honest. It's an advantage and a disadvantage, believe me. So that's the reason why. We're trying to keep our costs down. We're looking at the senior people in our community, and we're looking at the city as a means of providing some degree of financial compensation in that regard.
Appreciate that. So you also suggested that we could possibly remove the canine club?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Or you could buy it.
Okay.
Now, this is the reason why. I know you have an as-built survey.
Why would we buy our own land?
We have to sever it.
Why would we buy our own land?
Well, in order to take full control of it.
All right.
Call it what you will. It could be an ex gratia payment or what have you, but if you want to consider not paying a monthly sum and you just want to pay us to go away, we'll call it a buy. But regardless, we still need a boundary survey, which doesn't exist. And the as-built survey that Mr. Fletcher spoke to has got a note on the very first line saying, "This is not a boundary survey."
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So you made the suggestion to the city could remove the canine club?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you honestly think your residents, who probably use the canine club far more than the rest of the city, would want the canine club removed? Because that is something that they, I'm sure, appreciate as an amenity to the jockey club.
Not correct, ma'am.
Not correct?
Not correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You may have more, but I have a lot.
I may have more, thank you.
Commissioner Emmerich.
I got a few questions. I'm sure Chuck's going to come up and say that they maintain it on a regular cycle because that's what you did back in the day.
Exactly.
Yeah, and because where I was getting at with that was, we maintained the dog park when I was still here, but the grounds behind it were always like three foot tall until they got mowed down maybe twice a year, and you always maintained the ditches. So I remember that for firsthand knowledge, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. So the Department of Public Works for a drainage district maintains tract E, tract J, and tract, well, the R ditch that goes through tract L.
Can you put the map up, please, as you're saying those?
I'm sorry, sure.
That was my fault, I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, so we...
If you could point it out, Mr. Speaks, as you're addressing.
So tract E, we mow. We also mow this section of tract J and then the R ditch through this cleared area. And we do that six times a year.
And...
Where's the dog park?
The dog park is...
Yes, where is the dog park?
So it's this back corner.
Over there.
The parks maintains basically the other piece of tract L.
Stands into this, the parking area as well, so it crosses into tract K.
So it's part of K and part of L.
Who maintains the dog park?
For Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec.
Parks and Recs.
I wasn't done yet, Mayor.
Keep going.
You had stated before, now this all happened back in the past, and that your statutes of limitations have passed for any type of reconciliation on the lease agreement for payments and everything like that.
No, sir, just the specific location. For example, we cannot take you to court for putting the dog park in its current location.
Correct, that's what I was getting at.
Yes, sir.
What, you've done nothing with the property over all these years. Do you have any future plans to put anything on that property?
What the property does, sir, if, let's get the map back up. It provides continuity, this is all jockey club property. This is all jockey club property. So it provides continuity for the, within the jockey club itself, exclusive of the Miyaki Hachi Creek area or that drainage ditch anyway. So we keep this, it's designated recreation open space in your ULDC Land Development Code, and it's our, it was our intention, we wanted to keep it open for member use and for continuity between the northern portions and southern portions of the jockey club itself. The canine club, we put out surveys to our own membership and to probably about a 90% disapproval rate of its location and its current location. There's noise issues that we have to deal with, and people who live anywhere in this area here and down in here are more than au fait with the noise that comes out of the canine club. So contrary to Ms. McDowell's claim that we, a lot of our members want it there, some of our members want it there, most of them do not, most of them consider the canine club to be basically a burden on our activities.
All right, and then I have one final.
One more question?
Yeah, well, question statement is, if we're looking at this and what's there is the canine club, it's been there for many years. You keep it in open space, you know, undeveloped, and basically the city is maintaining all of this open space, you know? There really is no burden on you in the maintenance of the property, but I understand that you're talking about the liability from the canine club. So my suggestion is, rather than looking at a new lease with our attorneys, I would be suggesting to look at terminating the lease. And then this way, you no longer have any liability. It's all on the city. It's city property, and then we can go forward from there. That's the way I look at it.
Yep, and that's been discussed as well. And the problem that we have is that if we give up those tracts to the city writ large, the city can decide to do whatever it wants. So the city can then expand the canine club all through tracts J, K, and L of its own volition. The city could also rezone it and put buildings there. The city can basically do anything it wants, and as we have controlling interest at this particular point in time, we are not prepared to give that up. So cancellation of the lease outright is not an option from our perspective.
All right. Okay, Mayor, I'm done with my questions.
Commissioner Stokes.
On a percentage basis, and again, I know you can't nail it down, how much of this canine club is utilized by members of the jockey club and how much public?
I think that's more of a director/fund teller question, if you have any gut feel. I know we don't collect any statistics out there.
I would not have that information.
Yeah, I wouldn't think they would, but I would think the people who live there do. I'm not looking for a number to take to the bank. I just want a rough feel.
More people, sir, the general public, use the canine club than members of the jockey club.
That's what I kind of figured.
Well, just do the math.
Yeah, that's what I surmised. So now, having actually read the lease, section 17, I hear and I've heard that the city's taking care of it, but it does say here in section number 17, "The lessee shall be solely responsible for maintaining the lease premises and for maintaining any and all improvements." Nothing here contains, blah, 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 blah. Then it goes on to say that "Nothing herein contained shall construed to prevent the lessee from making such reasonable charges as deemed necessary to weather, to weather to the public or its own members for the use, maintenance, and management." So basically, you, the jockey club can decide whether or not to allow anyone to use it.
Correct.
And that is part of the lease. So there is the fly in the ointment. The lease is in existence for 99 years.
In perpetuity, sir.
In perpetu-, right. I take issue with, I don't quite understand why the city's taking care of it when the lease specifically says the jockey club should be taken care of. Okay, we're taking care of it and maintaining it, but clearly the jockey club has the authority to say what can be done. Now, on it, it could say, "We don't want anybody to use it. You can't allow the public anywhere." This lease gives them the right to decide how it's used. The question is, does the city, what does the city want, since the majority of the people that use this dog park, like, are from outside of the jockey club? Does the city really want this to be opened? Or can they, we leave the lease in place, they pay $1 a year, and they shut down the canine club? They could do that, can't they? And it stops the public from using the canine club. I mean, can't they?
Which I'm glad you pointed out that section, that language specifically in the lease, that section 17, because this lease is poorly drafted.
Aroly drafted.
Section 6 actually contradicts that exact language, saying that the city...
Paragraph 6 talks about improvements by the lessee, which is the jockey club, which could be taken over by the lessor, the city. So if you read paragraph 6 in its entirety, you'll see that it doesn't contradict paragraphs 16 and 17.
This is the problem, right? So we have arguments on either side, and it's a strong argument to renegotiate the lease, reopen it up for discussion, or enter into a restated and amended lease.
Does the city, but my question is, does the city need this, want this? Or should we just simply allow the jockey club to do what it wants? If it doesn't want it there and the majority of its members don't want it there, even though we own the property, the lease can stay in place, they can pay $1 a year, nobody needs to insure it if they just, like, stop anybody from using it, and then it's just a buffer lid, just sits there like forever, and nobody can do squat with it because of this idiotic agreement that was written. So I...
Let me just add one point to that.
Before my...
And the lessee technically is responsible for the maintenance of the property. So if we wanted to play hardball, and I am not at all suggesting this, the city could come back and assess the lessee with the money we have put into maintaining the property with or without the canine club as part of that. But I don't think that's where anyone wants to go. So City Manager.
Correct. And so the ultimate goal here that we came up with was, while we have this agreement in question, relevant to everyone who's here now, it was created a long time before a lot of us was here. The dog park was probably, I mean, the canine club was created before probably a lot of us were paying attention to this in 2010. We have an opportunity now to sort of fix it and right-size it. That's what we were trying to do, but like I said, without the ability to provide compensation. But again, that would take both of us sort of agreeing that that's what we wanted to do. But at the very least, if we didn't agree that that's what both of us wanted to do, and if we cannot make them change the agreement, then the board, we wanted to make sure that you agree that no financial compensation needed to be provided to them at this point in time. It's kind of messy.
Well, again, it comes back to my question. I'm sorry to continue to harp on this, is what is the city's intention regarding this property? What does the city want it to be? Does it care? I mean, that really is a determining factor in how we interact with the jockey club. Do we want that dog park to exist for the public to use?
The commission in the summer of 2021 made the request of expanding the dog park. That's what the city wanted.
Right.
We were politely told no, and then, oh, by the way, you owe us money for going forward. And so that's what led us here today. We wanted to expand it, they said no, and then other things came into place that we were trying to right-size.
Which is why, before any of this, like, I mean, all of this is like, irrelevant. If the commission today wants to expand it or maintain it, keep it going, or does it not care and not want it? That's the first decision to me to make. We have to decide that because that will determine how we interact. What's the sense in negotiating anything or saying no to any compensation? If the city wants this dog park to be there or to even expand, then one might consider there might be some value to discussing compensation. But if the city doesn't care, if this commission just wants to shut that dog park, shut it.
Shut it.
I mean, that's my point. Then it satisfies them, it satisfies us. I don't see the value of dog park, but yet, obviously, two years ago, the city commission, in its infinite wisdom, thought expansion would be a good idea. And most of the people who use it are members of the public, so that's something the commission should consider. So that's where I'm at.
City Manager, and I have some things to say, so I'm going to take my turn after City Manager speaks.
I would just say, based on the desire to expand... I would just say, based on the desire to expand it, we found a value in having it. So, we would like for it to stay there, we're not asking for anything more to happen to it, but if it were to close or be removed, I would think that the public would need somewhere to have those similar services, would then put us in a position of trying to find where that would be and what it would look like. So, from a staff standpoint, we would prefer that you don't say, "Close it," and just leave it the way that it is without asking for the additional expansion, which we've already asked for and been denied.
So, I just have a comment to make. I feel very badly for the jockey club and the situation faced by your HOA. I sympathize with that, but the city, this commission does not get involved in the affairs of the HOA, that is your responsibility. So, we have a really bad lease, and it's bad for you, and it's bad for us, so let's fix it. I don't want to play hardball with the jockey club. If push came to shove, I'd say, "Close the K-9 park," but I don't think we're there. I think we need to come together as friends, we've been neighbors for a long, long time. Let's sit down as friends, in fact, I think Mr. Richardson made this suggestion in his earlier public comment, let's fix the lease. It's bad for both of us, you want indemnity, if you want indemnity, we have to rewrite that lease. So, there is things that both sides want and don't want, you're honest about it, I appreciate it, not the city's job to supplement your HOA fees, as much as I sympathize with your plight, let's sit down with friends, as friends, and rewrite that lease so that it works for both parties. But my position is, if the dog park isn't wanted there, we'll move it. So, that's sort of where I'm sitting at this point. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, and I appreciate the mayor bringing up about the HOA. The city can't get involved with your HOA woes, because there's many HOAs in the city that have woes.
They all have woes.
They all have woes, and people chose to live in an HOA for various reasons, and they agreed to pay these fees, so that's kind of between you and your residents. The, and I understand, but the citizens of Northport, even outside of an HOA, have the same struggles of meeting their needs and making ends meet. Because you mentioned the woes of your HOA, it brought up section 18 of your lease, "The lessee you shall not mortgage or encumber its interests on that land." Have you guys done that?
No.
I'm asking, I don't know.
No.
No, okay.
Because it says we can't.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure, because-
It says we can't, so we don't.
This agreement went back eons ago.
Yes, ma'am.
So, maybe-
We follow the law.
But eons ago, maybe your predecessors did, that's why I was asking the question.
Oh, ma'am, we have not mortgaged.
As far as the expansion of the dog park, we asked, because our Parks and Rec Advisory Board brought it to the commission's attention, that they would like to have the dog park expanded, and so, we asked the question, would you guys be interested? You said no, we said, "Okay, not being expanded, we'll find another spot."
Yes, ma'am. There's also an accordance with the lease, because the lease, the provisions of the lease were discussed at the city commission's meetings when the jockey club voted to turn it down.
So, we turned it down, and-
We turned it down based on the lease that we had quoted, and that lease was referred to in the city commission discussions at the time. So, the city commissioners were aware of the lease.
So, we are, from what I'm hearing, at a stalemate, we really can't proceed and give city manager direction to appease you, because we don't have that authority to negotiate or anything like that. So, we can only sit here and say, "No, city manager, do not negotiate a lease," or our other option is, "Yes, city manager, see if you can negotiate a lease."
Yes, ma'am, we are prepared to negotiate. We were prepared to discuss this, but we haven't had any discussion from you since the 15th of September, apart from our letter.
And sir, this is the first time this commission is discussing this, okay? So, we cannot discuss it with you, because, one, we are not attorneys, we have to give that direction to our attorney and to our city manager to be able to sit down and negotiate further, all right? I, for one, am not going to be in favor of paying $3,000 a month, $36,000 a year, to the jockey club for land that we own, that is a small portion of land that we own, that we maintain, everything else, at no charge to you, even though the lease says you're responsible. So, there's this kind of give and take that's happening here, based on a mutual friendship and agreement that has kind of evolved far beyond this lease. So, I am inclined to ask the city manager to sit down with them and negotiate a lease, but I would be also in favor of just saying there is a no-charge or rental fee, I don't know what else to call it, for the K-9 club. I'm not inclined to do that, but whatever the negotiation is that comes back, you know, we'll have to go through it with a fine-tooth comb when that agreement comes back, if there is an agreement.
I have three lights on. Yes, I'd like to say so. I think we're ready for a motion, can we keep it brief? Because I think there's a lot of agreement up here. I have vice mayor first.
I guess maybe this is for the city attorneys, what happens if we just don't agree to negotiate a lease?
Status quo, ma'am. Did it ride?
Right, and I, as we've said, I'm just not, not for paying for our own land at all, and in order to subsidize the HOA, just not, it makes no sense.
Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, I'm in 100% agreement with Commissioner McDowell, I'm on the same page as her, I would not look at any financial money going out when we negotiate, because we are maintaining the property, and that should be their financial gain. They're not costing anything for them to go ahead, they could have code enforcement violations from the grass being too tall, but we take care of it. It could be a costly adventure for them to take care of it, and in no way would I be in support of tearing down that club, you know? There's no, there's so many citizens, we would have every dog lover in the tri-county area, we will have to have 42 overflows for the people in the meetings, because it is used that much. And I remember the days when we first opened it, they were just waiting to get in if we were a little late opening up the gates, and it is an asset to the city, and it's pretty well-maintained, so, I mean, Sandy and them do a great job. That's my bottom line, and if we got to go to court, I'll be a bulldog and go to court.
Commissioner Stokes, one final comment.
Well, the city likes the dog park, the city uses the dog park, citizens outside the jockey club enjoy and use it. The lease, again, I'm not aware, but the lease is pretty darn specific, that the jockey club has the authority to control what happens on that property, which puts the onus on the jockey club, so the jockey club could make certain decisions that would affect the public's ability to utilize that property. So, I would suggest that we allow city staff to meet with the jockey club representatives, have some discussions, see if there's not some way, there can be some meeting of the minds, with the caveat in there, or the requirement in there, as it was abundantly clear by the commission, that financial compensation does not appear to be on the table. But I think that there's still value in the parties getting together and discussing this matter, because there is some mutual interests here, and if anything can be resolved, it can be resolved, if it can, it can, and then each party has to take the actions they feel they have the right to take, based on the guidance that are attorneys. But I think the parties need to sit down and talk a little bit, assuming, you know, everybody heard, the commission does not want to spend money, city's not apparently prepared to pay anything, but that notwithstanding, the parties should sit and talk about this, because they're still wrapped up in each other's arms. That's all I have to say.
Okay, city clerk, is there any additional public comment on this item online in the House? I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to instruct the city manager and the city attorney to make a good-faith effort to renegotiate the lease with zero payout for rental of the dog park, and report back any actions or stalemates to the city commission as soon as possible.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell to direct city manager and city attorney to make a good-faith effort to renegotiate the lease agreement with the jockey club, HOA, and to report back in terms of progress made or obstacles encountered. Do I have a second?
Agreed.
Okay, if there's nothing more to that, are you all set, city clerk, with that motion? Let's vote. But I did. And that motion passes five to zero. Moving on to general business, item 23-0670, a discussion and possible action regarding the Warminal Springs Park Experience, et cetera, et cetera. City manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so this is the follow-up item that we discussed earlier to the rates that you set for Warminal Springs going forward. This will allow us to have a Warminal Springs Experience Vintage Florida Welcome Back Celebration from April 12th through April 25th, which is the second reading of the ordinance discussed earlier. This would put the rate set, I believe, $8 and $11, as decided upon earlier, and we're looking for your approval.
Thank you, city manager, I'm opening up the floor to commission questions and Not seeing any city-
Whoop, whoop, it came, sorry, it's there, I think yours is just a little slow.
It is a little slow. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I just appreciate the efforts being made to welcome back the citizens to Warminal Springs, and I can't help but not comment that this is a perfect economic driver that could be used on that land for Warminal Springs. This is one of the things that we envisioned during the master plan, so I look forward to seeing, you know, what this generates for the city, and, you know, for those little truck, food trucks that are going to come, because they are going to benefit from this. So, I don't think we need to discuss the change in the dollar amount, because that was already established with the ordinance, or do we need to have that discussion too?
I would think that you'd have to change it based on the way that it reads and what you decided earlier, to just make sure they're consistent with each other.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other lights on, so, city clerk, do we have any online public comment on this item? And I don't see any in-house, so I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion, ma'am.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to give the city manager and staff the green light to implement the Warminal Springs Park Experience Vintage Florida Welcome Back Celebration from April 12th, wait a minute, oh, through April 25th, using the rates of $8 per resident of Sarasota County, $11 for non-residents, and $11 per person for charter classes.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner Stokes to approve the implementation of the Warminal Springs Park Experience Vintage Florida Welcome Back Celebration from April 12th, 2023, through April 25th, 2023, using the rates of $8 for residents, $11 for guests, and $11 per person for charter groups. If there's nothing to that, more to that?
Just real quick, I just want to make sure that the city clerk captured the $8 for Sarasota County residents. Okay, I didn't hear the mayor say that part.
Let's vote. The definition of resident is county, that was established earlier, and that passes five to zero. Moving on to, how are we doing timewise? Okay, 23-0561, discussion and possible direction initiating a new project, Activity Center 3 Gateway Master Plan, city manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so currently in our fiscal year 23, there's $200,000 authorized for a Yorkshire master plan, we're asking that based on the impending arrival of the new hospital, that we change the master plan to a Gateway Master Plan for Sumter, and this would just move the Yorkshire master plan to fiscal year 24, and move up the master plan for Sumter into this current fiscal year.
Thank you.
So, there's no budget amendment needed, just a transfer of projects.
Okay, thank you. I'm opening up the floor to commission questions, Commissioner Stokes.
Yeah, I get it, I don't have a question, I just think this is a great idea, we definitely need to do with all that's going to take place in and around that area, it definitely warrants setting it up, and so, I'm in support, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. City clerk?
Mayor?
Okay, Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I just am curious, I know how long it took to do other master plans, does anybody kind of have a timeline of how this is going to work, what this is going to look Has it, it's got to go out for procurement, I would assume, come back for commission discussions multiple times, community input, what's this look like?
I believe Director Ray will come down and answer your questions, ma'am. We're tempted.
Good afternoon, Elena Ray, Director of Neighborhood Development Services, we're anticipating that we would have this done by May or June of next year, and that would be an imperative timeline, because we have also applied, we're applying for a grant for this, if we do receive it, the deadline is May-June next year.
Do we have to go out to bid for this?
We do not, we will submit an RLI with our planning library that we already have under contract. We have about five or six firms currently under contract.
And will this master plan include citizen feedback, you know, those kind of think-tank community conversations?
We do not anticipate that this will be of the scope, that it would need to go out for community meetings, we would bring it to the commission for discussion at a workshop likely, and the community would be able to have information that we would provide online as well, and Lori may have some additional information about her plans for it.
Good afternoon, Lori Barnes, Planning and Zoning Manager, because of the strict timeline for performance under the Department of Economic Opportunities Community Planning Grant, the community participation portion will be abridged for this project, we have included stakeholder participation in the deliverables for the planning consultant who will be assisting us in preparation, but we're looking at, you know, incorporating workshops, incorporating the hospital, incorporating the other large land- the other large land user that has expressed interest in the area, so that we're making sure that we're covering those bases, especially when it comes to the transportation interaction. So EFGOT would also be one of those stakeholders that we'd want to reach out to.
Right. And citizens, to me, are stakeholders, and there's a lot of residents in the general area, especially with the hospital coming out on board, that have expressed concern in light of the flooding as a result of Hurricane Ian. And they are looking to have a voice at the table to ensure their interests are also met and addressed. And I think that could only be done at a community workshop or as part of a stakeholders' meeting.
All right. We will do the best we can within the timeframe available to us, especially if we are awarded the grant and have to perform under those timelines. And since you mentioned flooding, I wanted you to be aware that part of the deliverables will be recommendations for stormwater improvements in the area due to the flooding that was experienced at Hurricane Ian.
And who would be, who would be the stakeholder in charge of that stormwater kind of, is it Swift Mud, or is it somebody from?
It would be the planning consultants, engineers, professional engineers, who would look at the conditions during Hurricane Ian and even Irma, and run models and pull in stormwater improvement recommendations to the city as far as, you know, capital improvements that we could complete to minimize the issues in that area.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. This area is also an activity center. How does a master development plan and an activity center play together?
The master plan might and likely would identify some things that need to be changed on the activity center in order to maximize its use and also to mitigate any unintended consequences.
And my second and final question is, just a year from now seems like such a long time, and my only concern is that that timeframe is complementary to the hospital's planning timeframe, since it's going to include mitigation for the flooding. I would certainly hope that we will be in regular communication with the hospital. Are you thinking that they would be part of the conversation?
Yes, they will be one of the stakeholders. The hospital also is concerned about flooding in that area.
Oh, I know that. That's why I'm bringing it up.
They are interested that we are doing the, looking to do this master plan as well. So it is, it is an aggressive timeline, but we will get it done as quickly as possible. That would just be our ultimate deadline, should we receive the grant. But we will be working as hard as we can to get it done sooner.
Great, thank you. I'm wildly supportive of your efforts. Okay. Do we have any public comment? I'm not seeing any other lights on, so is there any online or in-house public comment for this item, City Clerk? Then I am requesting a motion.
I guess I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I move the direct staff to move forward with creating the project to prepare a master plan for Activity Center Three Gateway.
Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Stokes, seconded by Commissioner Emmerich, to direct staff to move forward with creating the project to prepare a master plan for Activity Center Three, AKA the Gateway. If there's nothing more to that, let's vote, please. And that motion passes five to zero. You know, Commissioner Emmerich, I always wondered why you were the last vote when you were mayor, and now I get it.
Yeah, always nice to speak to you.
All right. Let's see, what time are we at? 3 o'clock? We've been at it. How about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back? Oh, wait a minute. We have one more item before reports, two more items. The Will of the Board, I'll push through.
I'll go pretend if you guys can get it done.
How about five?
Okay, a quick five-minute bio-break, and we will come back at, help me do the math, 3:12. Commissioner Emmerich is a little tardy getting back, but I'll acknowledge him when he arrives. Okay. We're moving on to item, make sure I'm in the right place, 23-0653, discussion and possible action regarding possible topics for a joint meeting with the Sarasota County Commission on May 18th, 2023. City Manager, this one's yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the list of options for potential topics for the joint meeting with the county commission. I did receive an email earlier from the county administrator saying that their items were approved at their meeting earlier today, so we are looking for an approval of our three items. Once our three items are approved, we will get the staff and the team to work on presentations. The format of the meeting will be, we will present our items, and then the county administrator will present their items, and you as the mayor of our commission will sort of guide our commission conversation, and Chairman Cuttinger as their chairman will guide their conversation as well. So we look forward for your approval of these three items, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. City Manager and Commissioner Emmerich has deigned to grace us with his presence.
The elevator was slow, sorry.
I am opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell.
So I see the word "update" used on every single one of these topics. And when I hear "update," I think of it more as "information." And thank you very much, it was a great conversation, and then we all go our separate ways. I'm kind of hoping that this time might be a little bit different. There's a lot of things that the county does for other municipalities that I don't feel are equally distributed to our city, and I would like to see if there could be a conversation, especially with the Aquatic Center. They were paying, I think it was $100,000 a year when the YMCA ran the old pool, and that money was removed entirely when the Aquatic Center opened. They also pay for the lifeguards at city beaches. They also pay for other municipalities to maintain their parks. We don't have a beach. We do have parks, but that was completely relinquished to our responsibility. And I just want to see if the commission or city manager has any advice on how to approach that, because, you know, this is an equitable thing. This is a, so, throwing it out there for discussion, because I want more than an update when we have this meeting.
So, Commissioner, I believe the word "update" was used to make sure that people who may not know anything recent about the topics that we're discussing would be brought up to speed on them individually. The word is not there or meant or desired to deter conversation from yourself or your colleagues or your elected official peers. I believe that you don't get this opportunity very often. I've been here for a year and a half, and I think, I know this is the first time it's happened since I've been here. So I would encourage you to, of course, professionally and respectfully make your needs known, and if there is a desire for a change in any of these and the way they're being operated, that's a good opportunity to get the consensus, not only of your colleagues, but the other elected board, that will send myself and the county administrator into a conversation for a deeper discussion. And then maybe out of that deeper discussion, you could get something of what you desired or something closer to what you desired than what's happening right now. But, but it is not meant to deter or think that we'll just breeze through these conversations and topics, as if there will be no discussion from yourself or your colleagues.
Thank you for that clarification, and I hope that I did that ask in a very respectful and professional manner, so.
You did.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes, I just, again, this is the first time we're doing this, so we will have the opportunity to have discussions about these topics and add things. For example, that mobility system, I'm assuming that's SCAT, talking about SCAT, and that we could interject what we would like to see. I'm not happy at all of the fact that we, our bus routes were eliminated here in Northport.
Yes, ma'am. So they will do a presentation on how it's currently working, and I'm pretty sure there will be some data that goes along with it, and there may even be some history that tells how we got there. I know what you're talking about, because we've had this conversation as a growing city, and some of the things that we want to do is dependent on a bus line being there, or dependent on, maybe the wrong word, desired might be better, especially as we continue to grow in a city of our size. And that is the audience for the conversation of maybe not so much as going back to, well, why'd you take it away, or what happened to it, but hey, how can we improve this going forward? Because we feel like there's still an unmet need there. We're grateful for what's happening, and we're glad that you have all the data for it, but the unmet need still exists, and can we talk about maybe, you know, a different version in the future?
Right.
That's a good conversation to have.
All right. And just so, my fellow board members, because some of you weren't here when this, when this changed, in 2020, the SCAT budget was something like $33 million, and they had to reduce it by 10%. And they did that by eliminating our bus routes and Inglewood's. That was their answer to that, and I'm not happy with that. And I also would like to make the pitch for some kind of a bus route on price, a trolley. I think maybe Commissioner McDowell had mentioned this before, but Sarasota has, the city of Sarasota has two trolleys now. They have a Siesta Key Beach Trolley, and they have the Bay Runner. I thought it'd be great just to pitch the idea of having like a bike trolley on price to get people out to that Northport connector without having to drive out there all the time. Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
And even though I wasn't here, I'm pretty sure the county might say that those places for removing those bus routes were due to a lack of use and based on ridership numbers. And again, not looking back, we could all just say, okay, that was fine, but maybe it's time to take another look and just say.
Right. And they didn't, and also they, those were with the full buses, they didn't even, you know, reduce and have smaller buses, or like Sarasota has trolleys, they're not, they're still buses, you know, but they're not the big buses. Like, they didn't even go to that step. They just said, oh, we're just going to get rid of everything. So I'm hoping that we can actually have that conversation with them.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, this is basically for Commissioner McDowell on her ask about the money for the pool. A little history on that was, the money was directly donated to the YMCA, and then the YM to offset their costs. So that may be a reason why it went that route and not straight to the city. I understand you want to have a conversation, I just didn't know if you knew the history on that. And my other question was, City Manager, has the county been instructed on how we like to take our breaks up here for this joint meeting?
They have not. I'll write a long memo.
Okay. That's all I had, ma'am, thank you.
We are a commission of tiny tanks. Commissioner Stokes.
Yeah. I really have no questions that these six topics really cover a multitude of things, and as long as it's not going to be a report by each side, I mean, there has to be an open discussion. It really does. I mean, it's not like we're just coming and making a lot of ass, but we really need to start engaging with the county, and they need to understand that, you know, we just are not an afterthought any longer, that there has to be some honest, frank dialogue, otherwise these meetings are a waste. So there needs to be some production out of here. So I'd love to see it say "update" and discussion, but I don't care, that's just semantics. As long as we're going to have a good, open, frank dialogue with them, I'm good.
Commissioner Stokes, to your point, an option might be, if you all have questions or comments that you want to submit in advance, and we can relay those to the county administrator, maybe they can weave those responses into their presentation, that might be helpful and may be help with time as well.
I think sometimes just eyeball to eyeball, when you say something to somebody and you get a response, you get a much better impression as to whether or not you're just getting shined on or not. And I'm speaking very frankly. I frankly think that the two commissions are primed to do a lot of good things together. So I don't mean, you know, past is past, and I think that we really do need to work together for our common interests, and there's a lot of great common interests. I look forward to great things, and I hope, I have not set my expectations too high, but I expect a good, frank, open dialogue face-to-face, and I hope it's only the first of many to come. That's all.
I would just say, as far as your expectations go, we will talk about that further in our one-on-one meeting, but what I would say is, this is an opportunity for us to share with them things that they don't know necessarily about us, which is probably why the word "update" is in there. It's also an opportunity to make some of your feelings known as well. But just as we have fiscal constraints, I know the county does as well, and those are good conversations to have and see, hey, can we find something different than what it looks like right now? And I think, you know, back from the very first item that Commissioner McDowell mentioned, if there's a way to get closer to what our expectation is, that's the conversation we want to have.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Since it's my turn, I would add to that. I would just respectfully request of the Northport Commission that we not try to craft or jam solutions down the county commission's throat. I think it's absolutely appropriate for us to introduce expectations or opportunities for us to work more closely on a particular item and leave it to our hired guns to work it out and involve the both commissions moving forward. So I would just add with my comments, I agree that the time is right for us to reopen the public transportation conversation. I can't argue with their decision four or so years ago to stop the bus routes, because I saw those big buses going by, and rarely would I see even one head in them. So I get it, but we've grown a lot in the last few years, and if we just take a look at the intersection of Price and Toledo Blade, we have one affordable housing development fully operational, we have, ground has been broken, I believe, on a second affordable housing age-restricted right across the street. And I've had conversations with a developer who's planning a mixed use on Price that includes affordable workforce housing. City Clerk, that will be part of my expertise when we come to that point. So there's just a lot of activity and a lot of affordable housing, and part of that package is enabling people to cost-effectively move from point A from point B. And given that that intersection is on our innovation entrance way there, we have a lot of businesses on that route as well. So I think the time is right. Mosquito control has also been a hot topic, and other communities do provide things like mosquito traps, and I don't know officially what they're called, but larva bombs that you can put in standing water, and they make those things available. Naples, for example, makes those available to residents through their fire departments. I'm not saying, is Deputy Chief Hurley, he's still here? I'm not saying that's what we should do, but I think the concept of making those kinds of tools more readily available to residents would go a long way to allaying people's concerns. So that's my two cents. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, and I appreciate Vice Mayor bringing up about SCAT, and yes, the reason was because it was underutilized, because the And yes, the reason was because it was underutilized because the hours of operation and the time of the bus pickups and drop offs was not conducive compared to what happens in Sarasota where a bus is coming on a regular basis. People don't want to sit there and wait an hour or two and then be able to transfer. So maybe the conversation could be had where we're going from Toledo and Price to City Hall to Welland Park. And maybe, you know, maybe like three or four little stops or trolley or something. But On Demand was a huge success and our citizens love On Demand. The problem is, and I have not received any updates, so maybe this could be part of the conversation, is On Demand does not go to Welland Park. So we need to make sure that that gets expanded to Welland Park so that people don't have, it will cut down on the traffic. So the other thing I would be remiss, and I don't know how we would respectfully do this, but not only did Sarasota County lose a matriarch, but so did all of Sarasota County and that includes us. And I, we really need to make sure that that is mentioned, how much she, Commissioner Dieter meant to our city. And I don't know how that would look at this joint meeting, but this is the only time we really get to express our condolences to that commission and to the entire Sarasota County. So hopefully county administrator is going to be in touch with city manager as far as arrangements, but for any viewings or funerals or anything like that. Maybe we could add something and talk to county administrator to see how they might want that addressed, but we really need to acknowledge her amazing service towards the city. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, Commissioner triggered a thought for me. I would just hope that whatever remembrances or celebration of life that the county commission might be planning, that we all be invited to that and try to be involved in that to show our support. Okay, I'm not seeing any other lights on. So city clerk, do we have any online or in-house public comment?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Taxpayers in need, please help. Commissioner, six weeks ago, you were asked to send a letter to Sarasota County Commissioners about mosquito control in Northport. Commissioner Nancy Dieter was the one who wanted to hear from you. She's gone now. She would have had the city's concerns researched, forwarded the letter and information to the county administrator and added it to the joint meeting agenda. That wouldn't, that won't happen unless one of you does it now. Please ask the county how many full-time licensed spray techs are in Northport. Nancy agreed if there's only one, that three are needed based on the land mass and population. Will it take 100,000 residents here before a one more is added? Ask for the Larva Dice Spray Plan specifically for Northport. Ask why the airplane is flown over the city before Larva Dice is ever done. Ask why they use the most toxic method of spray on Northport first and nowhere else in the county. Please watch the May 22, 2019 county commission meeting when all of these changes were voted on regarding spraying in Northport. All county commissioners approved changing the way Northport is sprayed and it never happened. Please do the research and add this to the agenda for discussion with county commissioners. Some are still there from 2019 and will understand the city's concerns because they were the same issues from 2015, which is why an expert panel was created in 2019 by commissioners to research Northport's residents' concerns and complaints. They listened to the experts and voted to make all recommended changes. The district refused and never hired any new full-timers as instructed. It's easy enough to prove. Ask where the nine full-time spray techs are assigned in the county. Ask for the amount of spray emissions in Northport since 2019 and how many in Venice and Sarasota. Ask how often they switch the spray for mosquito resistance in those plane emissions and why they don't get state approval to spray in our state forests to kill millions of mosquitoes near Welland Park. Please help us and that's all.
Thank you, city clerk. I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to approve the six, six topics for discussion points at our joint meeting with Sarasota County Commission with the emphasis of the public comment and the mosquito control to be included.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Emmerich to approve the list for potential topics for the joint meeting, the six items with an emphasis on the points made in the public commenter regarding mosquito control. There's nothing more to that. Let's vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Moving right along to item number 23-0599, discussion and possible action regarding the termination of the agreement between the Kiwanis Club of Northport and the city of Northport. City manager, this is your item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This item is related back to the agreement that we have with the Kiwanis in the clothing closet. If you remember, the agreement that we're asking to terminate is one that was specifically a partnership design for the Alvall Center in that location. We were actually able to secure a modular building after what I consider a long time of waiting and then the hurricane came through and damaged said modular building and put us, you know, back to square one. But once we sort of figured out and realized that we needed to get the services back open to the public as soon as possible, that's when our social services division manager, Janet Carrillo and her team decided to put it in the family service center. So now, in order for us to move forward, we're looking, we're asking to cancel the other agreement, which was just at that location, to put it in the new location. We are still working with them as it relates to their inclusion with the volunteers that they have as for the Thursday nights and Saturday morning time that they would like available. They've also done a couple of pop-ups on their own in order to make sure that the event continues. I would say after several months of it happening right now, we're probably at a point where we've recognized that the city running it is a little different than the Kiwanis running it based on the different rules that we each have to play by. The government is a little bit more stricter than the Kiwanis. Kiwanis as a nonprofit has a little bit less compliance issues than we do, but overall, I would say we're working well together. Ultimately, we want to make sure that they, who ran this program for 30 years, can still have the flexibility that they enjoyed while we still have the ability to serve the public in a more structured way, which is what we're doing now. So I continue to see the program evolve over the course of the future, but we will keep working at it together until we get it right. And the ultimate goal is to make sure that we service as many people in need as much as possible. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have about.
Thank you for that, city manager. I'm opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell, you're first in the queue.
Looking at this agreement, I see a glaring conflict between 2A and 2C. 2A says, business use, tenant will only use the premises for a storage area. But 2C says, tenant will actively use, occupy, operate, and conduct its business on the premise, premises to further the mission of the landlord's social services division. Could somebody please explain?
2A is referring to the storage building at the Alvall Center on Dallas White Park and 2C is referring to the family service center where the actual operations of the closet are currently being operated nine to five, Monday through Friday.
Okay, so the tenant acknowledges the mission of the landlord's social services division to provide continuous and uninterrupted services. Tenant will use, occupy, and operate and conduct business on the premises to further their mission. So is the tenant using family services to further the clothing closet or is family, is the Kiwanis using the storage unit that can only be used for storage?
So Kiwanis is using the storage building for storage. We are also working with them as their volunteers are available and our staff is still there to supplement our staff with the hours of nine to five, which our staff is already there, so those hours are set. But then the other hours that were existing prior to the city joining into this by operating out of, out of our facility were Thursdays, six to nine, and Saturdays, eight to 12. So they are still working through with us as their volunteers are pre-screened and qualified to perform those hours as well. Partnership.
Okay, so I'm really sorry. Maybe it's the hour, maybe it's the whole topic. When, when this, I understand that the tenant, Kiwanis, is acknowledging that social services will provide continuous services. Which may be similar to Kiwanis's services. Okay, that's, that sentence is clear. The next sentence, Kiwanis will actively use, occupy, operate, and conduct its business on the premise, premises. What premises?
As I just said.
Say it, say it again.
The family service center is the only premise that we are conducting business out of on a regular basis. When the Kiwanis uses our storage building, which is part of this agreement, that's where they are storing the items. The Kiwanis also has the ability, as anyone does, to put in a special event or a special use permit or whatever it's called, a special permit that would allow them to do a pop-up whenever they want based on the volume of material that they're trying to disperse.
So maybe what this agreement should say is that, because since it's not clear in the, you understand and you're explaining it to me, but this agreement proceed, you know, goes further. Maybe it should say the tenant will actively use, operate, and conduct its business at the social services building to further the mission of the social services division?
It's standard lease language, so if you choose to remove or revise it, then that is the will of the board.
Because if we're renting out the storage facility, it kind of sounds like they're also going to be holding clothing closet activities at that storage building. And that's not clear. That's why I'm bringing it up. You guys understand what it is. I'm looking at this with fresh eyes and kind of going, alarm bells. Why would we on 5A, why would we be installing signage at 5A on the storage building?
Afternoon, everyone. Janet Carrillo, social services manager for the record. So the lease that you have before you, we took the previous lease that they had before and are bringing it back before you so you can have that discussion. But the lease itself has standard language that we use across the board for like our family service center clients, so our tenants, I mean. So we, if you review it, we can go through it and of course, you know, legal will have to review it and we could have more standardized language for it. But, but to, for your specific question, Kiwanis leasing this location is completely separate than the clothing closet. Yes.
And I appreciate you saying that. It's all about the terms of the lease. I'm not seeing that distinct separation here with, between A and C. But back to my question about signage, why are we going to install signage on a storage facility?
We won't.
Okay, so that really needs to come out. And because this isn't at the social services center.
No, it's not.
That's why it needs to be a little bit more geared towards the actual location.
Okay.
The other thing is communications. We're not, I hope we're not putting an internet connection at the storage facility and that would be kind of silly. It's a storage facility. Is this not the same storage facility that I was absent that day was agreed to have them pay $75 a month?
Yes.
It is. So now we're going down to a dollar a month.
I believe that's the same amount that we charge any other partner that we're dealing with. And I want to say the art center is one, like the art center where we are partnering with them. So we, we believe we should be consistent.
But the art center is providing a service that people come and go to. This is a storage facility for them.
We are partnering with them. There is a clothing closet that is a partnership with Kiwanis overall, ma'am. They are a partner with us.
Partner with us, how with the clothing closet?
We are happy to remove or revise any language that you see fit. If you would just tell us what you want to read or what you want to do, ma'am.
Maybe somebody else can enlighten me as to what is the clothing closet, what is Kiwanis's role in the, I feel like this is deja vu. What is the clothing closet, the Kiwanis's role with the new revised social services clothing closet?
As I just said, they have volunteers that support the hours of the closet the same way they did prior to partnering with the city. They were partnering with the city. We were over at one location. All we're doing is moving it to a different location. It is not a complicated transfer. We're just changing sites.
Whole subject has been complicated from day one. So I want to make sure I completely understand what I am voting on and I appreciate the leeway and conversation, Mayor. I'll get some consensuses after everybody's weighed in.
Vice Mayor Wyatt.
So they're storing their, the clothes that they would be. Happen when, if they have a pop-up, that's the storage that we're talking about?
It would either be clothes for a pop-up or clothes in transition coming from that unit to our family service center after they have been sort of.
Right.
Checked on.
Okay.
Either one or the other.
Right. So that's how, it's in a partnership of what we're doing.
Correct.
With the clothing closet. Thank you. That's it.
I am not seeing any other lights on. So city clerk, do we have any online public comment on this item?
We do not.
Any in-house public comment on this item?
There is none.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion.
Can I get some consensuses first, Mayor?
You can try.
Okay. I'd like to have item 5A removed from the agreement. This is pertaining to signage. Get a consensus.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yeah, sure. I'm good with that.
I'm a yes, Vice Mayor. Yes. Commissioner Emmerich?
Yeah.
So we're going to remove 5A, thank you. And 2C, where it says, and conduct its business on the premises, I would like it to reflect to conduct its business on the, what is that called? Family services buildings premises.
Commissioner Stokes?
I'm very comfortable with the language, the way it reads. I think staff and city manager is more than capable and competent to like draft this the way it needs to be drafted. I see consensus on this.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't see any need for a change in language, Vice Mayor.
I'm good with it.
The way it is?
Yes.
Commissioner Emmerich?
As the city manager stated, that they could hold a pop-up there with a special event permit, so the language should stay the same.
Do you have more?
I'm just checking. That's fine. I'm done.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to terminate the old agreement between the Kiwanis Club of Northport.
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, I am so very.
We have public.
For asking for one, we did have public.
I'm asking for one.
There you go.
We have public.
Yes, there was none.
There was none.
I'll make a motion.
Good.
Move to approve the termination of the agreement between the Kiwanis Club of Northport Inc. and the city of Northport, Florida regarding the children's community clothing closet and approve the tenant lease agreement between the city of Northport and the Kiwanis Club of Northport Inc. for $1 per month for the space at the Alvall and several building for Kiwanis Club outreach efforts and also striking the item that had to deal with signage on the building.
5A.
5A. Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Emmerich, seconded by Commissioner Stokes to terminate the agreement between the Kiwanis Club of Northport Inc. and the city of Northport, Florida regarding the children's. City of Northport, Florida regarding the Children's Community Clothing Closet and the approval of the tenant lease agreement between the City of Northport and Kiwanis Club of Northport for $1 per month for space at the Algal Ancillary Building for Kiwanis Club outreach efforts, striking item number 5A regarding signage on the ancillary building. If there's nothing, did I say? Yes, I did. Okay, let's vote. And that motion passes five to zero. We are on to general public comment. Do we have any online or in-house, City Manager? I mean, City Clerk, I keep promoting you.
That's all for City Clerk.
There we are. We do not. Okay. Commission Communications, Vice Mayor Wyatt?
Oh, wow. Yes, just a couple of things. I went to the Northport Corral. They had their presentation of the music of Rodgers and Hammerstein. All right, that was great to see them back in action. There was actually a woman they honored. She, it was her swan song, so to speak, because she had been singing with them for 20 years. I thought that was pretty amazing. So, that was great. Went to a chamber ribbon cutting of another cottage food business, a woman that makes homemade scones. Well, some of you, some of the departments got those. I bought them scones and cookies. So, that was really great. And I have this thing about, oh, this is from that. And this was in the paper, well, we just talked about that, the clothing closet. It was in the paper that the county had purchased the, what was the Edmondson Dairy Farm on Edmondson Road, and you may be thinking, why am I bringing that up? It's because that's where the Northport Connector comes down to Northport. The legacy trail that's on the rail, the old railroad trail, it leaves that trail at Colonia and goes down to Albee Farm Road, makes a left, and there are signs there that say Northport Connector in Nacomis in that area, and then goes on to Edmondson, and that Edmondson turns into Border Road, and it's a very long way. But there's a lot of cyclists that are out there now, and they're coming down to Northport. But the county bought a former dairy farm and right there on Edmondson Road, and they're going to, and they're already working on it. So, that, I'm hoping that's going to be, have a restroom in there and be a nice rest stop for people that get on it at Northport and cycle all the way down there. So, that's it for me.
Terrific. Commissioner Emmerich?
Yeah, I actually got something to say this time.
Let's hear it.
I went to the bunny breakfast on Saturday for the Kiwanis, which was held out in the Legion. And they had a great crowd, children of all ages, everybody enjoyed themselves. And also, while I was there, I did meet with quite a few of the Estates individuals out there that were very, very concerned about the naming and rezoning. And I talked with them too quite, quite, quite a long time. So, it was a good day, and I just wanted to put that back on the record because I know we have some individuals in here that are listening. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, so, like all of you, I attended the Price Boulevard groundbreaking ceremony coming to fruition. I also helped Parks and Rec and give, I want to give some kudos to them. What an amazing flashlight egg hunt for the kids. I appreciated helping out, pass out the bunny baskets. So, you guys always do a good job. I really, really liked seeing the expanded space that evening. I was unfortunately unable to make Saturday's event, but if it's any indication how Friday's went, good job, everybody. Of course, went to FLC Conference, always a great time, mixing with FLC elected officials, my elected board. Our legislative analyst was able to attend. So, it was, it was a good event, and hopefully the state is going to be gentle with us cities as they are enacting laws and voting on things. So, that's, that's basically all I have for you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stokes?
Yes, just a couple of things. We did attend the Celebration Differences over at Butler Park. That was fabulous, really was tremendous. Hope lots of people went there to see it and go there to see it. Price Widen and Groundbreaking, which we all went to finally. So, that's an exciting, exciting occurrence. Also attended the FLC trip to Tallahassee to meet with our legislators and, you know, I think, I think that was valuable, having gone for the first time. It has helped to build relations, and it's nice to know that they are focused on Northport and our needs, and look forward to what help they may be able to provide. I also went to Washington for the National League of Cities. That was most interesting. There is quite a bit of money out there in various federal departments that hopefully our folks will be trolling through. It's quite a process to get it, but there is dollars out there for especially infrastructure. And so, that was worthwhile, and I had the opportunity to be there right on the first couple of days of Cherry Blossom Festival, which was a real treat since I went to college in Washington and hadn't been back in 40 years. Other than that, that's a wrap for me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Was that four years or 40 years? I wish it was only four, but it was 40.
It's this. It's this. I did many of the same things as my fellow Commissioner, the grand opening of the diversity exhibit, the Price groundbreaking, yay, the bunny breakfast hosted by Kiwanis, always a fabulous event, and the trip to Tallahassee. I want to share two things with the trip to Tallahassee. One, I want to thank Mr. Todd, who is our, I mean, Mr. Miles, who is our liaison. The legislature decided to break early. Representative Buchanan was ill and couldn't make our traditional Monday night dinner, and somehow he managed to pull all of that together and throw in an opportunity to watch one of the Senate Commissions in action. But I also want to share, while I was in Tallahassee, I learnt that there is a skill called worm thumping. Yes, worm thumping, and there is the ability for people who are looking for worms to go fishing, to thump the ground in such a way that the worms think there's a mole coming after them, and they come up to the surface and they can grab those worms for fishing. So, I was so enamored of worm thumping, I thought I would share it with all of you. So, with that, my report concludes, and I'm calling upon my charter officers for reports. City Manager?
Nothing to add, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Deputy City Attorney?
Our office, thank you all very much for approving our new attorney position. We will put this person to very good use.
Good, thank you. And City Clerk?
I have my companion.
Okay, well, it is an honor and a privilege. It is 3:45 PM, and I am adjourning this meeting. Amendment 355.